I'll call to order the meeting of the Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors, Wednesday, March 18th at 6:30 PM. At this time, I'd like to remind the public and board members to please silence your cellphones so we have a peaceful meeting, as all of our meetings are peaceful. And may we have the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I will lead us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Vice President Crowell?
Here.
Director Duncan?
Here.
President Heth?
Here.
Director Sosa?
Here.
Director Delius?
Here.
Let's take care of the approval of the consent calendar.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I'd like to pull one item off of the consent calendar.
I also have a correction in a minute.
Bill, what would you like pulled off?
Uh, C, approval to adopt resolution tenement. I've got some questions about it, might take a little while to answer them.
Thank you.
So we have company, maybe it would be best to put it off someplace else in the meeting.
Larry, did you have something you wanted?
Yes, in the minutes, I'm learning from our wordsmith or on page fourteen, iPad page fourteen, in two places, the word piece is used.
It's been fixed.
Oh, it's been fixed, oh, okay.
You can add that.
Okay.
So nothing other than?
The two of them.
Yeah, got them both, see, there and there.
Good. Okay, that was my only correction.
We've had some communication on that. So we're going to, um, I didn't hear a second. Would I, may I have a? Nope, I don't want a second. Another motion with item C removed.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with item C removed. Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. We will address item two C a little bit later in the agenda then. This is the time for public participation. This is for items that are not on the agenda. We're giving an opportunity to address the board, and although we will not take actions, we will not discuss any of the items brought up. If the public would like to bring up any topics that are not on the agenda later on, now is your opportunity. The rules and regulations for that presentation, for that, uh, public comments are on the page four of the agenda, and I will reiterate them if anybody needs it. But right now, let's find out if there's any public comments. We do have someone.
Warren Harvey, resident since 1947. Um, I have a couple of things that I'd like to have into the record. Um, I've been coming to these meetings quite a little while, and we're steadily spending more money than we got coming in. And I believe, I believe that Kevin, as a CFO, should be advising the board that they're spending more money than they're taking in, and they're gonna go broke at some point. You can, you can debate on what point it is, but obviously, we're spending more money, we're spending our reserves, we're spending the five million that we borrowed, we're spending the whole thing, we just keep going downhill. And I'd just like to read into the record that, speak into the record, that I feel that Kevin has an obligation to advise the board at every meeting how close they are to being insolvent. That's one. And the second thing is, I'd just like to ask, I know you're not supposed to answer, but I'd like to ask, Georgiana, if it's possible, if I bring a thumb drive at the next meeting, and I keep the video less than five minutes, could I play that?
That's not something we'll answer right now, but we'll take that.
Okay, but if I could get an answer somewhere along the line, I'd like to bring a little video in. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Any other public participation?
We want you, public comments to be viewed.
There being none, we're gonna move into item, item number four, approvals of the checks, and then, just so the board knows, after item number four, we'll go back and pick up item two C. So, we are going to be taking a look at the February checks and consider approval for the, our expenses and allocating alike expense for next month. And who would like to start off? Doug, you volunteered.
I volunteered.
You did.
Yeah, I have a couple that I looked at, and I think it's very good having this as the first item of business. Yeah, the last item of business, particularly if you're planning on having a time to adjourn. Because if it was, then we'd have to put this off over the other. I have, I have a couple of them circled here. Uh, I noticed that we bought two new eighteen-
Give us page number, please.
Uh, thirty-five. We bought two new eighteen-inch backhoe buckets, I have a poppy equipment on here, and, uh, were they replacing old buckets?
What's the vendor?
Who's the vendor? Vendor, poppy. I call it poppy.
P-A-P-A.
P-A, P-A.
I would assume they're replacing worn-out buckets.
Worn-out buckets. How long, how often, how long do we get on a bucket? Not the pins, but the bucket.
Long time, I guess. I haven't seen one in the check register for a very long time.
Very, very long time?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And, uh, I'm sure those are designed for rock work.
This is probably the first replacement since we bought the equipment through the smog grants six years ago.
And we're- Okay, let me, I got another one. It had to do with disability, whether we're paying the insurance, I got it circled here.
Page number?
Well, I haven't got that page yet. Sorry I'm taking the time here, but, uh, I thought I was a little better organized than I am. Uh, where is it at? It has to do with the disability. And there was three items on it, and I'll be damned, I always circle.
Is it disability withholdings?
Was it, yeah, I don't know if it's, it, the way I would say it either-
That area?
No.
Long-term disability?
Oh, here it is. It is the Standard Insurance Company, and there's, uh, long-term dis- thirty-six. I think it, we just went away from that. Uh, long-term disability, there was one for eight-hundred-and-thirty-five, seventeen, the seven-seventeen, and the other was eleven-hundred-and-sixty-five. Is that what we're paying someone that has disabled? Or we're paying that to the insurance carrier?
Insurance carrier.
Okay, and that's to cover the whole staff?
Yeah. And all disability. It came out in three different items, but you can see that it's all in one check.
Okay.
So that's just how the system punched it out.
Yeah. Uh, I, that's all I do today. Yeah, so this is our-
Thank you. Bill, do you have items you'd like to bring up?
Oh, okay. Um, I'd like to have to fight through this. On page, the first twenty-three, there's impulse Zen, who is that?
That's who sends their bills out to their customers. They do all of our printing, mailing, and stuffing.
Okay. And-
We see that same amount every month, pretty much.
We haven't, have, we haven't saved any staff time by doing that? Because we still have the same staff?
We've saved staff time in that we went to monthly billing, we would not be able to go to monthly billing if we weren't to printing, stuffing, and doing our bills in house.
You'd have to hire somebody else in the staff? Number thirty-three, it is Knife River Construction. Now, I'm just curious where the, it says construction and maintenance supplies, three bills, whether, what they were, were they gravel, whatever?
Knife River is most likely, um, is probably cut-back asphalt. Because we're doing pipeline on the south end of town, and that's probably the cold mix asphalt, we get it from there.
And we're getting along all right with the town now with the new asphalt.
Yeah, well, if you remember, that project we jumped on, and we're doing quite well, I'm really happy with the crews, but we're able to cut back those trenches, and then they're going to overlay it after we're done, so it's saving us the complete pavement rehabilitation on that project.
This is my division.
Yes.
Um, page forty-one. Meter charges, right at the top of the list. I noticed in the field report, it says we replaced a hundred and some meters this last month, or something? Is this, is that the money we spent for new meters? Other ones were battery?
That's actually, that's a private new account, so that's the money we've taken in, based on changing out meters.
Okay, it, that's just, uh, changing out meters, that's income from that?
That's new meters.
New meters, so we, we charge people.
Okay. Do we, where would be the, what has cost us for the replacing of meters?
Who's the vendor, who's the vendor, Kevin? When we, when we buy meters, do you remember?
Zenner. There wouldn't be a purchase probably this month.
There was.
Was there?
I, I can remember seeing one on there.
Zenner probably, or Badger.
Thirty-eight.
Could be Badger.
There was something at the very end-
I'll look under B for Badger.
At the very edge, the last thing, page thirty-eight.
For actual meter installation.
Those are Fireflies.
Firefly, yeah, ten thousand dollars.
That's what it was.
That's because we bought all those new ones.
Yeah. That's what I remember, was the Fireflies, not the meters.
Well, I-
Yeah, that was for inventory.
Okay, how, how many meters are we gonna have to replace? You have any idea we're gonna end up replacing all of them at this point?
Well, remember, we're not replacing-
The batteries?
We're just replaced, we've had issues with Fireflies.
How many Fireflies do we have?
We originally anticipated, um, one a week, one a day, maybe, but it-
It's about three hundred per year.
Three hundred per year is what we estimated, that's right. And it's slowed down quite a bit.
The new ones are lasting longer, aren't they?
Oh, yeah. Those are faulty.
And the, and the, the new ones come with a ten-year warranty.
Maybe one percent.
And the battery replacement is, is done on-site. So if a battery goes bad, you just slide the top off, put a new battery in, and then close it up, and then it automatically resets itself. The old ones were a sealed box, where the battery, it's kinda like an iPhone, you can't just replace your phone, your, your battery, your iPhone, you have to send it away, and that's how those were sealed. So there was a sealed box, where you had to send it away, and get it re-installed, the software. So, we're replacing the old ones with the new ones, and the new ones have the warranty and have the battery replacement.
Okay, and there's approximately three hundred that we originally installed, is that it?
Three hundred per year that we're replacing of the ten thousand that were originally installed.
So we, we are gonna replace ten thousand?
Well-
Well, can we get the information and bring it back next month?
Sure.
Because originally, we had a pretty rapid rate, and then I think it slowed down, so let's get some information from the meter shop, we'll bring it back to you next month.
Okay, thank you. And-
And to answer your question on what it costs us to replace a meter, it costs us nothing for a new meter to be cut, to set, because people are paying for them, not only the parts, but the labor.
No, I understood that, I just got the wrong check number. And what I was after is what Ken and others showed me, that, okay, because I saw it in the field report that we're replacing all these meters, I'm going, wait a minute, are we gonna, how many are we replacing, and how fast will this go? So I'll wait next month if you-
We'll get your report.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Larry?
Okay, page twenty-nine, Youth County Elections.
Dang it.
Why are we paying, I thought we didn't have anybody in there?
The administrative class for doing any election for one agency.
Even if we aren't in there, huh?
That's because we have to go down and refile.
You have to go red, you have to go file.
Three of us had to refile and do all that, member.
That's a lot of money, yeah, okay. A lot less than if we'd have been in there, right?
Not cheap to keep you here, Larry.
Right.
For sure.
Okay, on page thirty, Downtown Ford. We bought two last time, now we got another one?
Yeah, we have three.
It's three total? Okay, I couldn't remember. How, that is it then, right?
Should, I think we've got all the replacements.
I think these were the last ones, yeah.
Okay.
This was the last one.
Page thirty-one. Um, jeans, A1 glass.
How much?
I, I think if we'd have gone with Miller, we'd have gotten a lot cheaper. Because they do it for free, right?
Possibly free.
Probably can't.
I know, I know. Just a, just a joke.
And the wound gets reopened.
Thank you, feel better. He got me, so I got him. Okay, on page thirty-two, uh, what is this, uh, can't read it, I should have brought my glasses. It was nine hundred and, I can't-
Forklift rental?
Yeah, right, forklift rental. What is it, this was part, putting in the, in the thing that we're testing up at the plant?
No, that was hauled off with the cream, but we have, um, I saw the forklift there today, and I think that's for a different project.
But Doug, weren't we gonna buy a forklift at one time? Or is this a bigger one?
This is a different type, more all-terrain.
Oh, okay, so we don't, we don't use it enough to buy?
Right.
Okay, on the next page, Batteries, To Repair A Water Truck.
Who's the vendor?
Interstate Battery.
Interstate Battery.
So, does a water truck need a battery?
Yeah, but is, that's considered a repair? Buying a battery?
Yeah, I know, no.
Auto supply.
It's not an upgrade.
Seems like a repair to me.
Okay, I, okay, I wouldn't have put it in repairs, I would have put it in supplies. Okay, um, right, and then we have Water Works, Water Supply, uh-
What page?
Same page, thirty-three, um, I can't-
And the vendor is who?
Trying to read it, uh-
What are you looking at?
Water Supply, something-
Water Conservation Education?
Oh, yeah.
News and Review?
News and Review.
Right, is that, is that a one-shot deal?
No, that was twelve thousand dollars total, remember?
We approved it.
Oh, so this is just part of it? Oh, okay.
How many months ago did we approve it?
Three.
Oh, I thought you said eight, and I was like-
A few.
Yeah, okay, I was like, eight months ago, it's been that long? Yeah, I was thinking three, is what I had in my head.
Okay, on page thirty-seven, it's to the US Bank, there's a whole bunch of charges with just numbers on them.
Fifteen, three, I don't know what that is.
Well, Larry, you're taking everything.
I was wondering, a whole bunch of numbers, it doesn't tell me anything.
It doesn't say anything. That one is a mystery.
They were like, it's, yeah, there's a lot of money there. They're in the second page, too.
I know, she must have put in the invoice number as the description.
Oh, okay.
And that's what's come up.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Sepp, do you have any questions?
No, my thunder's completely gone. That was, that was everything I had.
It's up to you.
Well, I, I previously got the one on thirty-eight for ShoreTel answered, uh, how, but I would like to bring up, probably for just visibility reasons, go back to page thirty, check for the enterprise record, it says, it's twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars we paid for a public notice, and tell us what that public notice really was.
That's our advertising for the information technology position.
Oh, that we had to do, we-
Just in advertising for-
No, it's just when we, when we advertise-
Any opening.
Opening.
Classified ad.
That's how expensive advertising is got.
A few weekends.
Help wanted.
So getting, doing the lake guy in-house saves us twenty-two-hundred dollars.
You could say that, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, save that in a pocket for Kevin next year, wouldn't you?
That was my idea.
Right.
Okay.
That's his bonus.
I have no other, no other questions, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the February checks. Uh, let's see, general check fund numbers, four-seven-five-three-six through four-seven-six-six-six for the month of February 2015, totaling five-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-eight and seventy cents. Exclusives, exclusive, exclusive, avoided check numbers, four-seven-six-oh-five, four-seven-six-twenty, and authorize a similar amount, allowing or adjusting for extraordinary budget or board-approved items during the month of March 2015.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? We're gonna move back to approval of the, to the consent calendar item we took off, item two C for the resolution, and Bill, I think that was yours, do you have, you said you had some questions?
Yeah, I, I do. I have the questions on changing the Assistant Distribution Maintenance Supervisor to Super, Assistant Superintendent. Um, I'd like an explanation, is the job description changed with this, or is it just title?
It was, I can explain that. When John Price retired, then Keith O'Brien was awarded the position for Superintendent, which vacated the Assistant Superintendent position. And when Jim Lardini was moved over to that position, um, and his position was eliminated. So when the titles change, we have to go through this process.
Okay, there's no change in his job description, then?
Yes, there is.
There was.
I mean, there, there was.
Yeah, this is, this is just a renaming.
Okay, and when we did that with, oh, come on, Mickey, the, a job description was furnished on a tourist, on what exactly was changed, in other words, can we-
Well, keep in mind, Jim changed positions, so his, he, the descriptions were never changed. He moved from one to the other. When we did Mickey's, we created a new position, so you had to approve that job description.
Okay, but the job description is the same as his previous maintenance thing?
So there was-
No.
No.
The job description where he went to is the same.
Job descriptions go with a title, okay?
Okay.
So he had a, his previous title, he had a job description, then he was moved to the new title, that job description was existing, and there was no changes needed. If there's no changes needed, it never comes back to the board.
Okay, and then, did he see any change in his wage level with this title change?
Yes.
How much was it?
I don't know off the top of my head.
This is, this all-
It was all, it was all covered in a budget discussion, I'm sure.
This is all previous?
It's been-
Two years? Yeah, I was gonna say, wasn't it two years ago that this all happened?
Yep.
Then the wage increase was two years ago?
Year and a half.
The position, the position move was two years ago.
When he went into the position, he got the rate.
He got promoted. When you get promoted, you get an increase in pay.
Um, you don't remember how, Kevin, do you remember?
If I was to guess, it would be between fifteen, ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
And, and we approved it in the budget, and it was explained to us?
High end to high end. Individually, they get usually five percent on four to five percent increase individually when they move to a promoted position.
So it was included in the budget when John Price retired, John Price, he retired, it was included that Keith would then take his position.
Right.
He did a salary range, was then included for Keith's position, Jim then was moved to Keith's position, so Jim took over Keith's position for salary range, and then Jim's old position was then eliminated, and that was all calculated based on John's retirement. So John's retirement savings were calculated based on not hiring somebody to backfill Jim Lardini's position.
And that was given to us as a board and explained to us specifically? I don't remember any-
It was in the budget.
It was actually given to you twice, it was given to you not only in the budget, but when John was retiring, and you're making a decision on John retiring.
Getting early retirement approval.
Right, that's when it was given to you guys also.
How long ago was that?
Couple of years.
Yeah, I think at least.
So we, when he left, we saved some money.
Correct.
Until, until he was promoted.
That's correct. Well, you saved money because you did backfill Jim's position, so you're saving money continuously.
Yeah, and you're also saving money because John left at the top, and Keith came in somewhere in the middle.
Yeah. We did the same when Wendy left, correct?
No, there was no savings when Wendy left.
Oh, no, there was.
But then, you have a gap between the high and the low, of hiring low and getting rid of low.
Right, I know, we didn't get rid of the position, but we saved money because now we don't have somebody at the top.
But somebody in the entry position.
Right.
Yeah, I had some questions on this, and I didn't bring it up when Kellogg put it on there. I did somewhat answer my question, but this Assistant Distribution Superintendent is, has been on the books before.
Oh, yes.
I mean, it's not a brand, it's not a brand-new title.
Yep.
Okay, because the reason I asked that, I could take and introduce you to some, in fact, I was a recipient of some of it myself, where that they started out with a direct, I'm talking to you college, okay, if they were sitting out here in the audience, they started out as a director, and then all of a sudden, they're a VP, and there's a significant difference in pay going between a director, same duties, basically, and they generally hire a confidential person to help them with their new duties, they're doing the same damn thing. And they now have six of them, you know, when they used to have none, they were all directors, and of course, like you're saying, it's ten to fifteen thousand dollar increase for Jim.
For Keith.
Was Keith that went up, or the Jim went up?
Potential.
That's, that's going from high to low, of what he moved from range to range.
Yeah, but this is, this Assistant Superintendent is going to be Jim Lardini.
Correct.
It already has been, for a couple of years.
Okay, for a couple of years, and he's, he got, when he, when he moved from the supervisor to the superintendent, he got a ten to fifteen thousand dollar raise.
No.
He did.
He got a four to five percent raise.
Okay, four to five percent raise, okay, good. But he has new duties.
Yes.
And his old position was eliminated.
And his old position was, for the period of time there, building the, helping build or supervise the building.
His, his original position was created as a, a plan for, a strategic plan for replacement of senior management personnel.
Oh, good.
So we knew John was gonna retire, so we needed to get a new assistant, and then we knew we needed a new assistant when John retired, so we created this distribution supervisor position quite a few years ago, and it was all part of a staged plan for, uh, these retirements, because we had, when I got here, we had a, a pretty sizable group, Rick Toronal, John Price, and Wendy, that were all gonna leave about the same time, so I came to the board with a plan for succession.
Well, you know, George, with your permission, you've had me work with Jim on two or three different projects, the garden man, one of them, and I have nothing but the highest compliments in his dedication, you know, I really don't, he's always had not argued at all.
Any, any further questions?
No, it's been answered thoroughly, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I move we adopt Resolution Number 2015-02.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Do we have any public comments on this item?
Thank you, Lauren Harvey. Um, the board, the board give away the twenty thousand bucks for the elections to bonuses and stuff, because they said they saved it, is now, is my understanding now that we didn't save all, we should have put, spent part of that money on, on this registration and stuff for the election?
We can't answer that, but it's not right. Your comment isn't right.
That's all right, you can make comments, and we'll, we'll note them if we want to follow up with them.
I'll answer it at break, if you want.
Okay.
You'll answer it at the break.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Back to the board, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Corolla?
Yes.
Director Duncan?
Yes.
Director Moser?
Yes.
Director Dallas?
Yes.
President Hurd?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. We're finished now with the consent calendar, that we have no old business, we're gonna move into new business. Item 6A, the Aqua Joint Powers Insurance Authority. Manager Barber, would you introduce this topic, please?
Yeah, we had a lot, thankfully, we had a light agenda, so this worked out perfectly. We've been working for a while to have, JPIA came up and talked to you, they're close enough to us, so we wanted to cover two different items. John Offs here to talk about our risk management and the certificate of excellence. And then Andy Salz is here to give you kind of an overview of what JPIA does for you and the programs they have. Oftentimes, you know, we talk about it at lots of meetings, but I, I think it's good for the board to get a firsthand presentation from Andy to let you know everything they, they cover for us, because they're pretty comprehensive in their coverage, so.
Well, good evening, and this is just, it's an overview of the JPIA, there's a lot of data here. It's pretty interactive. If you have a question at any time, feel free to ask, I, I'll, I'll do it. If I can't get you, if I don't know the answer, I certainly will get the, find the answer for you and get back to you on it. And so, any questions are appreciated, it'll help me move along, and Mr. President, if I'm dragging, just give me the sign to move along here, sometimes I get a, a bit yappy.
I get...
Five bucks.
Was there another twenty?
Was there a twenty dollar fine on that?
Yeah, there was a twenty dollar fine.
You know, it went from five to twenty bucks, just that quick, right there.
Twenty dollars into the kids' fishing for the A fund.
Shit, they're even coming on the iPad here.
Can't get away. With that said, again, we're the Association of California Water Agencies Joint Powers Insurance Authority. It's a long name that basically talks, that says that we're a joint powers authority, and we're formed through Aqua. Aqua is the organization that, that started this process, if you will, it was members of Aqua. So Aqua, the Association of California Water Agencies, is a separate organization. They lobby, basically, they lobby on behalf of water districts at the federal and state level. They help promote water policy and advertisement and things like that. They have their own separate board. I'm the executive officer there, that's Bob at doing that. So, so what is it really? It's, it's really, it's a partnership of three hundred and seventy-plus water districts around the state of California, everywhere from San Diego to Lake Tahoe, from Pebble Beach to Humboldt, so, and there's very large districts involved in there, and there's some very small districts in there. The majority of our districts are less than fifty employees. Some of them are large enough on the liability side that, well, like Orange County, their, their new processing plant has about three hundred employees there. EID over in El Dorado County is very large as well, they're large geographically, and they probably have a couple hundred employees as well, I wanna say about two twenty. Most of our districts are less than fifty. There are a little over a hundred JPAs in the state of California. Probably in the state of California, ninety-plus percent of all public entities do their insurance, either through a joint powers authority, or they're self-insured. For instance, in the water industry, East Bay Mud, East Bay Mud is so large, so, so large that they self-insure. They have, they retain their own losses, and then they go buy insurance for great big losses. City of San Francisco and some, you know, City of Sacramento, they're large enough that they're gonna start self-insuring there. The neat thing about JPAs is, is their structure, since, to be a member of our JPA, you have to be a public water agency, so mutuals can't participate in the program, private water companies can't participate in the program. They have to be a public entity, they have to have their own board that govern them. So a city water department can't participate, for instance, because they don't have their own governance board in, in that program. JPAs are just very cost-effective by design, you know, the Joint Powers Act's been on the book for a long time, but JPA, insurance JPAs became very popular back in the late seventies and early eighties, when insurance was just very, very hard, it was, what's called a hard market, it was very difficult for public entities to find. I think the city of Pittsburgh in the Bay Area one year went without insurance. Nobody literally would sell them insurance at any price. So that's what started this process. So they're very cost-effective in that, since all of the agencies that participate are a public entity, that makes us a public entity, so there's no profit margin involved there. And likewise, we don't pay any income taxes, so we operate very similar to you. As a matter of fact, our code is based on the water district code, that, that our governance is set up through water code there. The neat thing about it is it's administered through contract law, not insurance law. So for instance, we can't be sued for bad faith. It's, there's a contractual agreement that you have with the other three hundred and sixty-nine members on each one of the memorandums, or each one of the pool programs that you participate in, and I'll talk about that, but it's governed by contract law, so it's, it's much more clean, it's much more clear how it works that way. And I don't have to file an annual report with the Department of Insurance, so I particularly like it myself. So we're governed by the membership, that's what really this is all about. My board is three hundred and seventy members large. Each eight participating agency appoints one of your elected officials to sit on our board. I think Director Hunt, I think you're our post-inning. It's a little difficult, no, no, we do that. What that committee does do, though, what the board does, and we meet twice a year at the annual conference, so we'll be in Sacramento here in May. That board elects an executive committee, and that's eight members. The Aqua Vice President sits as the ninth member there.
Jerry, he used to be on Calafco.
Jerry did?
Yeah.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, he's still very involved with Calafco down in the Valencia area there, but you're right, he was State Calafco there. Tom Cuquet is up here at Sutter, South Sutter Water District, he is a rice farmer there in Sutter County. Dave Hodgson, for instance, is in, above Santa Cruz there in the Scotts Valley, you know, Water District, right there at the top of seventeen. Bill is in San Diego, Chuck, and then Melody. Our election coming up in May at conference, we have an election, we actually have five openings on our executive committee, three incumbents there. Lou Rinkins was on the committee at Tahoe City PUD, and, and was not re-elected at his district, and that created an opening. And Joe Dion in Citrus Heights had to step down for medical reasons, so it's kind of, will be interesting. I'm gonna see a change in my governance, and we've been so steady for so long, I'm now gonna have two new executive committee members, and it's been a while since we've seen that. We have a program committee that's, that is for each one of our, what I call pooled programs, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about those. The, the program committees are made up of directors and staff of water agencies around the state, and, and they're the ones really, they, they, they listen to the programs, they make recommendations to the executive committee, the executive committee then has the authority to vote on those issues and, and pass those there. We have a fin, a couple of other standing committees, a finance and audit committee, and a risk management. The finance committee, for instance, is made up of finance professionals from water districts around, Dennis Mitchum from Glen Calusa Irrigation District sits on our finance committee, for instance, and, and they really kind of look at it from the members' perspective, and that's the way the whole program was set up. It's administered by and run by the members. They hire a staff, they hire me, and we go out and hire others, but really, it's the, those committees that set the policy, that set our coverages, that approve the limits that we have, any expansions to coverage, it's all done by that.
You mentioned a couple of things, like an opening on the executive board, and then you talked about these committees. I don't really remember seeing a call for people interested, how, what's the process and someone being involved in that?
There should have been a notice that went out on the executive committee, and you've missed the deadline there, but I'd love to get somebody to volunteer maybe next time, and if there's an opening, if you're interested, it's more often than not, our, it's south, it's south state that generally gets in here, and it's hard to get people involved from the northern part of the state. It was nice, and then, of course, the two people I lose are from the northern part of the state, so, and now it's up to election again. Generally, what the executive committee does is if we have an opening, they appoint members, so I'd love to talk to you some more about that, if anybody'd be interested. The executive committee is similar to what you guys do, they meet probably eight, ten times a year, they are the ones that set policy, we almost, well, we meet at conference, and then we meet in Sacramento. Some of the committee, the openings on committees, I have an opening now on the liability committee that could be either staff and/or a director as well, and I would pass that information on for you. I'd love to get some more representation up north, it's generally dominated by the south. The south is generally where the larger districts are, and we work pretty hard to try and maintain that balance, so I will send you an email on that, and you could check and see if either your staff or maybe up there. We, we pay a per diem for the board members when they come down there, I know it's, it's an all-day thing for you, you know, you got an hour and a half, two-hour drive down, and an hour and a half, two-hour drive back, but we, we do pay a per diem, and I, I'm gonna say, and, and whatever your travel expenses are, so we try and make it so it's not a big there. It's your time, pardon, Sacramento for most of those meetings, yes.
Per diem?
Yes.
I'm on Calafco, Executive Board, and we don't get per diem.
Yeah, actually, you know, we're pretty generous in that per diem, it's about two, I wanna say two twenty-five, maybe now, two fifty, but it does, because people come from all over the state, it does almost, like in your case, it, it's a, like I said, you know, by the time you do everything, it's a two-hour drive down and a two-hour drive back, you're there in the meeting for a couple hours, maybe more sometimes, so it is an all-day event that you're asked to do there, so.
We, in Calafco, we just went regional, so that we don't have, we have sixteen executive on our board.
Right.
And we have four from each region.
Okay.
So that way, we keep balance that way.
Yeah, and that's a good idea. One thing we are taking more of is, is technology as well, we do provide call-in, you know, and we have it on the screen, we use WebEx, and for instance, we distributed iPads, and so you can prop your iPad up there and use that camera, and you show up on screen for us, and then you can see the screen as well. So presentations come up there, and then whoever's talking shows up, so that's another way of doing it. We don't pay a per diem for staff, that's only for the directors there. So I talked a little bit about our pooled programs, and we, we have, and I'll talk about them individually, a liability property, workers' comp, and employee benefits. The liability program, third, what we call third-party claims, that's if somebody sues you. A pipe break maybe happens, a canal overflows, maybe one of your employees was involved in an automobile accident, and the other party sues, that's what's covered under the liability program. Employment practice issues are covered under the liability program as well. It is, it has sixty million dollars worth of limits there, there are no, if there's no aggregate limit there, we could have an unlimited number of sixty million dollar claims in a given year. I don't ever want that to happen, mind you, but it is there, people get that. We did have a claim that threatened to push that, and you, I've talked about it in the past, we had a large fire in Yorba Linda, where it went, it was called the Freeway Complex Fire, Yorba Linda's there in Orange County, and it basically went through, this fire went through and burned down about thirty homes, high-value homes in the Yorba Linda area there. Turned out that the, ultimately was a lack of water pressure, and it was because the wiring had, that bed, that electric to the pump that was feeding the fire suppression system, the wiring caught fire, and so therefore, you couldn't pump water in, and so you had on the six o'clock news, the fireman standing there with no water coming out of the hose, and that turned out to just be a, a major pain in my rear end, because AIG, it happened right when AIG was going, you know, the government just took it over in August, that fire happened in November, there was nobody there that knew what they were doing, and then they tried to say in the end that there was no coverage, and I ended up having to sue them, and it took me a million dollars to get, you know, my money out of them, and, ah, that was terrible. So, sorry, I, I, that was not one of my better, my better moments there, dealing with AIG. The pooled program, what's pooling means is that the first two million dollars of every claim is shared by, there's about two hundred and ninety members in the liability program. And each of these pooled programs, members are free to choose, you can be in like liability and workers' comp, but not property, you can be in just one, you can be in all three, members choose what are in there. So we have about two hundred and ninety members in the pool program. So the first two million dollars of every loss is shared by the two hundred and ninety members in that program. Anything above two million, we buy excess insurance, and no, we don't buy it from AIG anymore, but we buy excess insurance that takes us up to the sixty million dollars then. That's the way the program works. We have a fund that was set aside that's now basically fully funded, you saw a decrease in your rate a few years back because the program's fully funded, so if there was a catastrophic event, like a Yorba Linda, and AIG didn't come through, we could have handled that, that way, so you, you're backed up in a number of ways there.
Just for information, what are we part of in that pooled?
We're in every.
All three?
Yeah, actually, you're, you're in all four, counting the employee benefits now as well. So, the property program is a separate pool, it's like, it's what we call first-party, that's your, that's your equipment around here, it's like your homeowners, it would cover your vehicles, your buildings, your pumps, your electrical panels, all of that is covered through the property program. There's a hundred million dollars worth of limits there. Couple of unique things about the property program, boiler and machinery is included in that program, most of the time, it's a standalone, we made a decision to put them together, because the, the typical example is the pump out in the middle of nowhere that, and the building burned down that housed it. So whoever's carrying insurance on the building says, no, that's a boiler and machinery loss, because it's the pump that burned down, and then that's why the building burnt. And whoever's carrying it on the boiler and machinery on the pump says, no, the building caught fire, and that's what burned the pump down, so it's on that policy. So to stop those arguments, we make it all one policy. And earthquake and flood are also included in the program there. I would tell you, the flood, especially now, is about twenty-five million, I'm comfortable with that. Earthquake only has about two and a half million dollars worth of coverage there. So a major event, like in LA, or, or maybe Humboldt, a major event, it's not designed to cover that. What that, that part of the program is designed to do is, you know, FEMA, FEMA will come in, that will be a natural, national disaster, and FEMA will come in, but FEMA will start asking questions. One, did you have appropriate insurance? Did you already have insurance? You get to raise your hand and say yes, so now you get to step into that pool that said, yes, we had insurance, we've exhausted that. The next thing is, is, did you do any of your FEMA training? We make that available to our members. So we try to make it so that you could have access to those FEMA funds. We are working on a program to get that two and a half million dollar limits a little higher, because I, my, my fear is, is that even though you'd qualify for FEMA funds, it could take you two or three years or more to get those funds back from FEMA, and if a, if a district didn't have those type of reserves, we could at least step in there, and you could get critical, critical infrastructure moving right away, and then go backwards towards FEMA on it. So we are working on a method of growing that earthquake, we're gonna call it natural disaster fund, that will help us fund in those events.
Would this, does this cover our dam? Is that property?
Your dam is a separate program. Yes, it's there to a separate amount, I don't know, do you guys have, are you guys in the separate dam program? I would have to double-check on that, I, that's their, that's a good question.
What kind of dam program are we in?
It seems like we're in every dam program out there, so.
There's, I, I will double-check that one there, make sure on that one. The workers' compensation program is workers' compensation, it, you know, there's over six thousand employees covered in there. There's no deductible on that plan, same thing in the liability program, everything's paid from dollar one. The neat thing about the work comp program is that it had, all of our claims are administered in-house, so we don't have a third-party administer, administrator for our claims, so there are own claims examiners. So if, if, if General Manager Barber there, or somebody on staff wanted to talk directly to the person handling a claim, you can do that, I mean, any, any of you could call if you wanted to do that. It is a unique thing, JPAs, different than insurance, and I remember talking with Dick Damon, who was my claims manager, still is, and he said, you know, Andy, this is way different than the private industry, you realize that, right? Well, what are you talking about? His comment is, well, you've told me that my job is to find ways to have coverage for our members. If a claim comes up, I'm to interpret that memorandum of coverage to find coverage for members. In the private industry, my job was to deny coverage, I was, my job was to look at that same memorandum of coverage and say, no, you don't fit here. So it is quite different in that regard, there are things, you know, Yorba Linda, you could have argued in that Yorba Linda fire, if it was denied at the excess layer, should have been denied down at that primary layer, but that would have left Yorba Linda bare, so we stepped up to the plate there. But if you think about it, that's, if, if you were designing an insurance company for yourself, that's what you would want it to do. You would want it to pay claims that were there to be paid, pay them promptly, and then move on. If you guys had a claim, and you guys, you know, knock on wood, or have been very successful for the last several years here in the liability and property programs, but if you have a claim, you want it paid, you want it paid quickly, and, and that's what we do.
But there's also a component of workers' comp where we want to see some type of aggressive enforcement for fraud.
Absolutely right, and we are much more aggressive in that regard as well, because we're administering a claim ourselves. A lot of other JPAs, and even some of them around here, they will hire what's called a third-party administer, administrator to, to manage those claims. That administrator is just gonna manage, they, they, if they suspect that there is significant amount of fraud, then they maybe will alert somebody to that. We, on the other hand, are very aggressive in that regard. I would have to say that I kind of work with staff on this. Sometimes, you know, be realistic, sometimes you have an employee that is just working the system, and you know it, they're working the system, and so the general manager, the HR person says, yeah, we want to do exactly what is required by law, no more. Sometimes you have an employee that, they just got injured, they're a good employee, you wanna get them back to work as fast as you can, and you wanna help them through that process, then we'll step forward in that regard. So I do use... So I do use some input from staff around the state on each situation and that's kind of what our claims examiners do there. So I can't take, I can't not pay anybody that's due under the process of law. I mean, there's fines and penalties there, but if, if, if you're telling me they're working the system, we can make it difficult for them to get what they're trying to get. On the flip side, we can make it easier if they deserve it. So I, it's, it's an interesting dilemma that we run in, in all of the programs, liability, property, and workers' comp, in that sometimes a district wants something that is pretty far of a stretch. As long as it's within their own deductible or retention, I'm okay with that. But if it gets past that, remember, we share in all of those losses. So if it gets past that, now I gotta say, hey, wait a minute. Paradise is going to come back to me and say, hey, why are you paying on that claim? That's not part of the memorandum of coverage. So it's kind of a fine line that we walk. We help members as much as we can, but ultimately, our responsibility, John's responsibility, my responsibility is to the pool. What's, what's the best interest of the pool? So just kind of how that works there. Workers' compensation, I've probably taken enough time there. As we know, and I think I was out here, what, last May or so, and you guys worked on that, on the health benefit program. There was a separate JPA. It got merged with us, so we administer the health, dental, life, and vision. I came out here, made a short presentation to you on the consumer-driven health plan, the high-deductible plan in an HSA, and I know you guys have since moved forward with that. So we're encouraging a lot of members to do that. You guys are, believe it or not, on the cutting edge of this stuff here. It's, it's, it's really, it's going to give you the flexibility to do things in the future that some districts, and, and my big fear here is, of course, the Cadillac tax. It, it comes in two thousand and eighteen. It's a forty percent excise tax on anything over. Some of my programs may get there. The HMO, I wouldn't be surprised if it, if it's not there in two thousand and eighteen, it'll be there shortly. Members need options there. And if they don't start educating employees now, they're going to come, you know, fall of two thousand and seventeen and say, oh, by the way, we need to do this and you employees need to move into this and that's going to be a struggle. So moving forward on it today, I was just reading in Kiplinger, the letter, they predict by 2020, ninety percent of all health programs offered will be a high-deductible plan tied to some sort of savings account. It's just the wave of the future. It's, it's coming and it's going to roll right in whether we want it or not. It's just too expensive to do things the other way. What it hopes to do is get employees and their families more involved in their healthcare decisions so that they don't just say, yeah, doc, I'll do that and don't think twice about it. We don't do that in anything else we do, but in the healthcare industry, we've done it for a long time. So that's kind of what it does and it, it gives them a chance to, and the program that you guys adopted, it, it puts skin in the game, but they can make, they can save money with their skin. It's, it's a nice feature there. It's there. And by the way, we did pass that, that Castlight product is coming out there, so it gives employees a chance to look at what some of their options are. It's a software program that they could look on their iPad or a phone or a computer and see what their options are as far as getting treatment, generic drugs versus name-brand drugs, things like that.
Can you explain to the board too, the EAP program that they offered to them?
Oh, yeah. The EAP program is Employee Assistance Program is, is a great deal here. And basically, the EAP program, it's costing you, I want to say, two dollars and sixty-five cents a month per employee. It gives an employee access to, I want to say, it gives them legal access, family counseling, it gives the district training options, and there's like up to six times a year you could use like illegal stuff, six times a year on family counseling. And it's, and it's good for everybody in the family there and it's completely, I mean, you have no idea, all you know is that somebody, I, I don't even know, do you guys get notice? I, all I get, when I get the bill, is that there were six people using services. I don't know what services they used. I don't know who they are. I don't know what district they're from. And, yes.
And those services are covered by around two dollars a month?
Yes.
Two dollars and sixty cents or whatever.
Yeah, two dollars and sixty-five. It's a great deal. I don't know why more people don't do it, you know? And they also do management training as well. You get up to like eight hours a year and they'll come here and do it. So you might want to watch for that, just to see how it is. They've talked about things like, you know, we did, they did a session for us on diversity training or something like that. We did have a manager and a, a staff member not seeing eye to eye on some stuff and they did some individual counseling there as well, so.
It's a really great tool and it's a great tool for our supervisors because, you know, they're managing multiple people and you, they get to know these guys like family and when they come in dragging in and they're in a whole different mood than they usually are, it's not like a supervisor in today's world could be their counselor, but he can at least pull them in and say, you know, I know something's going on with you. Here's the EAP, talk somebody, it helps.
Is this, is this two dollar fifty cent or whatever it is for staff, do we just pay that? I mean, is it part of our benefit package?
Yeah. It, it's, you know, it's one of those things that I encourage everybody to use it and take advantage of it, but if everybody that had the product used it to its full extent, the cost would start going up rather quickly there, so. But it's just not used. People are reluctant to take advantage of it, you know? I think they might even do an ethics training class as well, if you guys needed to do an ethics training and maybe the sexual harassment training class as well. Oh, you, council provides train, the ethics training, very good. And then do you, do you also teach them how to be sexual harassers? I mean, you give them sexual harassment training as well?
Trying, yeah.
Okay.
Trying to retrain them.
Trying to retrain them, yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Is the EAP available to the directors? That service?
That's a good question. Oh, then absolutely it is. If, yeah, if, if you're, because, yeah, if, if you're paying for it, it's available and if it's included, absolutely. So I would, I would look at, there's a lot, you know, they even do preliminary estate planning, get you started there and help you. I used them because they helped put the documentation together so that when I went with somebody to go sit down and do my will and trust and everything, I had my documentation in place. I knew what I was looking for. It's, you know, what a great deal and it didn't cost anything and they, you know, and they have a lot of representation around the state. It's a very big network of providers.
Thank you.
So one of the neat things about our programs, the liability property, workers' comp, is that since they are all managed by the water districts, we have some very unique coverages involved in here, in the program. I already mentioned boiler and machinery as, as being included in the property program. The directors and officers coverage, DNO coverage in the liability program by itself is not unique, but there's a feature in there that if you, one of your, you are by this board appointed to sit on another board, Alafco board, a chamber of commerce, some other situation, and that group gets sued for whatever they've done under a director and officers, your coverage from the JPI follows you there. So you're completely covered there. The other members of that board, they're on their own, but you're covering there. And it wasn't always that way, but you know, water districts, they do a lot of working together on a lot of different things and that was a coverage that came through the committees as a recommendation and we were able to secure that. So, so that's covered. Inverse condemnation, that Yorba Linda, you know, so inverse condemnation is the taking or devaluing through the Government Entities Act, that property, right? So they either took the property or they devalued the property through their action or inaction, in either case there. And so that's an, that's inverse. The thing about inverse, if, and, and we're seeing more and more of it, people generally sue with inverse because if, if the plaintiff, the person suing you is successful, then they get their costs as well. So it's amazing how often that's now alleged, whether it's there or not. In the private industry though, what happens if you were getting your insurance someplace else and through the private industry is it's probably not included. So let's say that there is a, a million-dollar loss and they're going to allege three causes of action. The insurance company would say, okay, one of those three is inverse, that's not covered, so I'll do two-thirds of your defense and two-thirds of the indemnity. You have to cover a third of that. We're about the only JPA that offers sixty million dollars worth of limits of inverse, though I think that will start going. There's another program around, SDRMA, for instance, and they're in this area here and I don't know, I think Golden State is in this area as well. I don't know what sort, but SDRMA, I, I don't think they have a million-dollar limit and you pay separately for that. But that's something that the members wanted to see there.
Yep. I was wondering, you said we, in the joint powers, you have three-hundred-and-sixty-nine members there. And every once in a while, you crop up and say, we get, go together on a claim. So say if you're sued for a million dollars, we'll just use round figures.
All right.
All three-hundred-and-sixty-nine of us would help you cough up that million dollars.
Correct. We've already collected it from you and it's not necessarily all three-sixty-nine. So in, let's say you're sued and under the liability, there's only two-hundred and nine, only, two-hundred-and-ninety of you will cough up that, up, up that million dollars. Yeah.
But we don't write a check for it at, at the time it gets done.
That's correct.
It's in our premiums and, and you're collecting a certain amount.
So is it the premium, is it all of that?
Right.
So we're actually paying that upfront?
Absolutely. Absolutely, you are.
Do you, you know, we moved from our old corporation yard to this one? Did that save us money or cost us money?
You know, and once again, it probably, depending on what was there, I could argue it either way, you know, and now I sound like a lawyer saying I'm going to argue it either way.
Or an insurance agent.
Yeah. What, what do you want the answer to be?
That's my, I'm a tax man. That's what I ask.
It probably cost you more because you have newer facilities that are valued at a higher rate and your premium is based on the value of those properties.
But our liability should be less because.
Your liability is based on payroll, nice try. So.
But our real liability is what really went down.
The real life liability.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, is in, in that facilities. And, and they're cleaner, they're safer facilities and probably, you were probably paying premiums on the old facilities that probably you didn't need to do, you know? It's, it, you, you may have had it depreciated and, and so therefore, you know, one of the things we do, and John can talk about it, is we have Chuck Wagonceller that goes out to all of our districts in the, in the property program. There's about two-hundred-and-fifty in that property program and we do an appraisal every five years of everything there. So we're looking to make sure you haven't forgot something, like heaven forbid that new plant never got told to us. It seems unlikely as much as we're around, but that could happen. But vehicles, old vehicles are still on there, you know, and sometimes, doesn't, we haven't seen them much, but when we first started doing appraisals, we'd see old, because nobody would take it off or they decommissioned a pump plant, a pump house and it's still on there and they're still paying premiums for it. So a lot of times when a new parcel comes off, there's a little more closer scrutiny to the values there. So that's why I said it could go both ways. Probably went up because they're newer valued properties and they're probably higher valued.
Yeah, I was going to ask you how often you audit and you just told me that though.
Okay, yep. Try and get out once every five years. You know, it, it does two things though. By doing the appraisals ourself, then you know that when I pay off a building for you or I pay off a building that got destroyed at Tahima Colusa, you know that they were all valued correctly. They didn't get to say, ooh, this two-hundred-thousand-dollar building, well, we thought it was a five-hundred-thousand-dollar building and, or this truck, this nineteen-eighty-three Ford pickup truck that we've had on our books now for the last twenty-three years was actually worth twenty thousand. Well, no, sorry, we know better.
I was just told by my insurance person that a barn that I built for twenty thousand is now worth seventy-eight thousand, but I probably couldn't get ten for it.
Yeah. Although we do pay replacement cost, so it is true. We would replace the barn, but I'm not going to replace it in mahogany for you. Okay. Long as we understand. I already mentioned earthquake and flood. So, so a lot of what we do is designed to reduce our exposure. The biggest cost I have are claims. That's, that's the biggest cost in all of our programs. So all of the things I'm going to talk about now are helping us to reduce our exposure to these claims and/or, once a claim has happened, reduce the severity of it. And, and John can talk a little bit about that in our commitment to excellence program. You know, the commitment to excellence program, a, a simple thing is, you know, we talk about exercising valves. How often are you out exercising valves? Well, the real issue for me, believe it or not, that's a liability issue for me on that valve because the number, and you know, that big pipe break in LA for, LA, not us, LA Water and Power that flooded Poly Pavilion? You know why that damage was so bad? One, they couldn't find the valve. And when they found it, they couldn't shut it off. It was frozen. They got it about halfway done. It took them eighteen hours to finally shut the water off there. Took them that long to find it and then it wouldn't work. So, but that happens, you know? Pipes break, things happen, that's okay. The kicker is, is do your crews, are they trained? Do they know where your valves are? Can they turn those valves off? Can they reroute that water so that other people are not adversely affected? And, and that's really why I'm concerned about exercising valves. It's a liability issue, so just keep kind of a heads up there. So we do have a risk management group.
If you don't do it right, it could be a workers' comp issue.
And if you don't do it right, and, and John could tell you, there's valve exercising machines now. You could think about something like that. On the great big valves, that's probably very appropriate on a, a machine to do it. But, yeah, because back injuries are expensive.
What are, what are your deal on fire hydrants?
I like them.
Yeah, but you, you know, nobody, in Paradise, nobody will claim who owns it. The town says they don't own it, PIDE says we don't own them and I was just wondering how do you handle it?
It's not unique to Paradise, let, let me tell you. You know, that, and that was part of the issue in Yorba Linda. I'm going to be doing a lessons learned up at Amador County on Yorba Linda. Part of the issue is those agreements and that's, that's a tough one there. A lot of times, the water district will, you know, when you're putting in a new system or when you're putting in a system, yeah, it's our pipes, we'll hook up the fire hydrant, but now who's responsible for maintaining that fire hydrant? Who's responsible for flushing those fire hydrants? Who's responsible for checking the flow there? And that becomes problematic to me. In, in Yorba Linda's case, they had, they made, and a staff report twenty years earlier, they say, oh yeah, we want to maintain this flow rate, so many gallons per minute flow. Did anybody ever check to see that? Nope. But that was their goal, that's what they wanted. Well, when we get to court, well, when we get to depositions, well, you said you're going to have this flow here. We found the document that says, we've tested two fire hydrants, we can't find a fire hydrant that has that much flow. Well, that was back then. We've added more connections. We have more housing during, on it then. We, there's no way we could hope to maintain that kind of flow now based on our system. Well, why is it in your written documents that that's the flow that's going to be there? So that's an interesting thing. I would, I would tell districts now, if you have a policy of checking fire hydrants every two years and you're not doing it, if that's your policy, or pipes, water flow, and you're not doing it, you'd be better off saying, we have a policy of checking flow as necessary. Soon as you put two years down and something happens on that twenty-sixth month, man, that plaintiff's attorney is going to be all over you for not following your own procedures. And if you can't follow those procedures, how can we guarantee that you've done anything right? Just pay me now. It's kind of, I hear that more than once. So it's an interesting thought and that's kind of the issues with Yorba Linda. Risk management, we have six people out in the field now that go and work with our water agencies. They do everything from risk assessments, they do training. John was here today doing training with the staff. He'll be back tomorrow. What classes did you do today?
Well, today, let's see.
Yeah, I know.
The sun has gone down.
Yeah.
We did suspension activation, refreshment class, most everyone, except for two guys that hadn't trained before, so it was pretty easy. They, they trained me and I asked them questions and they gave me answers. They trained me, I asked them questions, they gave me answers, so we'll work out there. Probably do the same thing in confined space and traffic control.
So.
For our district?
Yep. Well, the nice thing, well, yeah, right up there. The nice thing that you guys do here though is you do open up to other agencies around, like Glenn Colusa, I think you said, had been here one time. Yep. So it's, it's this, it's this network, I have to tell you, you know, I belong to Caja Papa, California Association Joint Powers Authorities, yada yada, but listening to what they go through, you know, they do cities and towns, some of the big ones, and thank goodness we don't do that, because firemen and policemen and the liability that goes with that is not something I'd wanna deal with. But water districts are very quick to share information, they're very quick to share what's going right, what are the best practices there. And that's a big thing of what these people in the field are doing. If John sees something working well here at Paradise, he could pass it on to Glenn Colusa, I mean, John's all around the state, he could pass it on up into the Humboldt area, or he passes it on to Peter who lives in San Diego. So maybe some of the procedures that you're doing here in Paradise are now being implemented in San Diego and vice versa. If Peter finds a good practice, they get together with their in-house, talk about what they are and pass it around. Water districts are great. I have, you know, quite frankly, a fairly easy job compared to some of my compadres in this field in that it's a very homogeneous group and water district people just, they wanna do well. I mean, you know, it's funny, and you guys know, you talk with your neighbors and such, and you know, where else in the rest of the world do they flush their toilet with drinking water? But we do it and we don't even think about it. I mean, does any of your neighbors ever think that their water, their toilet's not gonna flush in the morning or that the shower won't come on with water? And yet, you know, water districts spend a lot of time and a lot of money making sure that happens. Most of the public have no idea the effort that goes into it. And so, nice thing about water people, they don't come in saying, you know, I don't care if the water works today, it's not my job, you know, it just doesn't happen that way. It's, it's a great thing, it's a very homogeneous group. We have a human resources thing, basically that deals with the EPL, Employment Practice Liability. It's a big issue in the liability program, we work with districts. We have a hotline, if you guys had an issue, two employees got in a fight in a parking lot, what do you, what am I gonna do? You could call the hotline and talk to them, and if we can't answer your question, we put you in contact with an attorney, he'll talk to you for, you know, 30 minutes, an hour, and help you get set up. Can't handle the whole claim for free, but he'll get you set up. He'll ask, did you document that? Did you document that? What does your policy say? Did you read your policy book? So, things like that. It's a way of reducing our exposure to employment practice claims, and they make up about 7% of our total losses, and we average about seven to eight million dollars a year in losses in that liability program. We do a lot of specialized training, like John, you know, said, I mean, you know, traffic and, traffic and flagger control, confined space entry, things that are unique to water districts. I mentioned we did some of our meetings via webinar, we do a lot, via WebEx through the internet, we do a lot of webinars now, and I'd already talked about the property appraisals. Training for districts, last year we did 321 training classes around the state. These are face-to-face classes, this doesn't count our online training classes, it doesn't count our webinars, these were face-to-face training classes, about 5,000 employees participated in that training class. What that means to you though, is I'll show you in a minute how you participated in those, it means that the other water districts are doing it as well. Like I said, we pool the first $2 million of every loss, we pool the first $100,000 of every property loss, we pool together the first $2 million of every workers comp. So it's important that you participate in the training, but it's also important that the other 300 water agencies are participating in that training as well. For you guys, and this doesn't even count what John did today, last year you guys, you had John and, did you do all of them here last year? Was out here three, for doing three separate classes last year. We have a Target Solutions, which is an online training program, you've got 40 employees participating in that. We had a webinar, we've had several of them, you had somebody call in and participate in the webinar, and we have a professional development program, and one of your employees is enrolled in that. They may be taking classes and not enrolled, but one of them's truly enrolled, and we have, you can get a certificate in new supervisor, waterworks and HR, correct? Operations. And we're looking on, working, developing a fourth one, which would be senior management, general managers, senior staff, leadership training, if you will. Kind of about what George was talking about earlier tonight, I'm in the same situation. A lot of us have staff that's starting to retire, and it's particularly true in this pooling industry that I'm in, you know, basically they started in 1980, so they're 35, we're 35 years into it. Most of those people are retiring or are getting ready to retire. So that, and I hear that all over the state, it's an issue for all of us doing that. And so how do you get some of these people to step up and be leaders? It's one thing to be a manager, it's another to be a leader, and that's one of the programs that we've been kinda tasked of developing there, and when it's available, I'll let you know and you can see what's available there, and it's a neat process to put together a program. Well, it's neat because all I have to do is say, do it, but for those others that are putting it together, they work kinda hard at getting those programs working. And we talked about some of these drivers course, I know John did a defensive driver course here last year, we talked about confined space entry, the traffic control and flagger. We do field ergonomics classes, we do sexual harassment training classes, we talk about hiring practices, once again addressing those EPL programs. It's all about controlling costs, like I said, my costs are the claims, that's the biggest issue we deal with, and if we have less claims, the program costs less, and that's kind of an indication of how we've done. 2008, 2009, that's that Yorba Linda fire, 04, 05, we had a couple of fires in San Diego and a couple of really bad, I had a child drown, two children drowned in canals in the Central Valley that were pretty expensive as well.
Were there any, with our, our last fire, did we have any claims?
Yes.
I didn't think so.
No? Good. I like to hear that.
Yeah, you too. Means we're doing a good job.
I feel we're pretty proactive, staff keeps us pretty proactive on our programs and making sure that we're up to date or at least current on training, I mean, is that your guys' take on it too?
Absolutely. I did ask to come up because you guys, your folks want me to come up and do the training, and also come up do risk assessments, once you're anyways there's a requirement of what we have in the program. But the very fact that you want it, you want the training, it's proactive, journeying forward, it's something I'm happy to do because I know so well, if I come up and do the class through, sort of guys, there's sort of people will take that information, use it every day that I'm on the job. You know, I can't get anything other than that. I'm just trying to help.
You know, I'd have to say, I would echo that, and kudos to staff at this point, I don't really need to do that for them, but you know, these services are there and there's no additional fee for them. It's part of the programs that we have, it's part of the deposit premiums that you pay, there's, you know, if there's a lunch, maybe you have to pay for the lunch. But there's, you know, to take these classes, to go online and take those classes, there's no fee for any of that, there's no additional fee for it. So the fact that staff takes advantage of those resources and puts them to use, you'll see, I'll talk about, we have what's called an E-mod in the liability program, and it compares your losses to the average losses in the pool, and if your losses are better, you get a discount. And if your losses are worse, then you're gonna pay an extra premium there. So Yorba Linda's E-mod went up a little bit. But yours, in the liability program, I don't, I have it here, I don't think you guys have been above one in 15, 20 years? So they've been very, very proactive there in that regard, so, yeah. So, but that's something.
Can you speak to your rates? I don't wanna preempt your presentation if you're gonna get it later, but I'm curious how they are determined, district by district.
So in the liability program, it's based on payroll. What's your total payroll is on your program, and then we modify that number. So we have a formula that calculates basically, in my case, it's a little unique, in the liability program, okay, I'll give you a kind of the Reader's Digest version. So in the liability program, I estimate what we need in a given year, let's say it's $15 million, and then we divvy that up amongst the 290 members based on what their premium, based on what their payroll is, that gets a basic premium. That basic premium is then adjusted up or down based on your loss experience. So like I said, in your case, you guys have like an E-mod of .8. So your basic, so you get basically, because your losses have been so good, you basically get a 20% discount. And it's been ranging around .79 to .82 for the last 10, 15 years, I got 10 years worth of history. So you get a discount there. So that's based on, so liability's based on payroll. And the question, you know, the issue is, how do you establish what your exposure is? Can't do it by the amount of water delivered, because the irrigation districts would get hammered. You can't do it by geographic size, you could maybe do it, can't do it by number of connections, because some of the wholesalers, they only have five connections. Mind you, they serve three cities and two other water districts that service 25,000 people in the basin there. So payroll is what we use, and the idea is, you know, the more people you have on the road, the more staff that you have, probably the better chance there is of a loss. Workers comp, same thing, workers comp is based on payroll, we follow the same guidelines that SCIF, State Compensation Insurance Fund. So the WCIRB, Workers Compensation Insurance Rating Bureau, sets this E-mod, they have a formula for that, and we use that same exact formula. And in that case, you're being compared about, by similar type employees, by class, irrigation workers versus waterworks versus office workers type thing, and you're compared to the state average. And if you're better than the state average that they would project you to have, then your E-mod once again is less than one, and if you're worse than the average, then your E-mod is greater than one. We're free to pick the rates, so you hear a lot about the commissioner is, you know, they have a 3% increase in pure premium rates in workers comp, or an 8% or a 2% decrease, whatever that is. It's just a pure rate, all of the district, all of the private industries, they have, you know, the good guy factor, the bad guy factor, you're buying this insurance here and that insurance. In our case, it's just, we've matched what our losses are with what our premiums are by those class codes. So basically, what do waterworks cost me? The people in that waterwork code, if they have a work comp injury, we know what code they're in, and so we match the premium to their losses based on category. Office workers are based on that, and then we keep that so that it's fairly balanced, so based on payroll. Property is just insured value, property is based on their insured value. It varies by thing, but it's roughly 10 cents per thousand dollars of value. And then employee benefits is a whole nother story.
Is there, I guess this would be in the liability category, you know, you have a, is there, is there some kind of statistical calculation that, you know, you have a district that sits on the San Andreas Fault, they've got Mr. Sexual harasser for a manager, they've had five fires come through in the last 20 years, is there something that goes into that? They approach you and say, we wanna join. Are they paying under the same formula, or is there some kind of?
Pretty much the same formula, the E-mod, I mean, E-mod can whack you pretty hard, and E-mod can go as far up as like, the larger the district, the larger the spread, we could double and almost triple a premium there.
But that E-mod is loss experience?
Right, over a three-year rolling period.
So how does a new member join?
We would look, one of the, one of the processes is, is that you have to give us your loss runs, we have to see what they are, and we would look at that. I have to say that quite frankly, it's kinda hard to get into the JPIA these days. We've established what I would say is our critical mass, we're past that, and we're very stable, our membership, you know, it's been 290 members for the last 15 years now, it goes down one, up one a year. So with that said, for a new member to come in, Zone 7, I could use them as an example, fairly large district in the Alameda, Contra Costa County area there, they're moving from a county organization to being administered on their own, their own board of directors, their own stuff. We've been out there, I wanna say six times, looking at all of their facilities, looking at their loss runs, looking at that. They're not ready. What generally happens now is somebody gets put on a service, what do I wanna call it? A service plan, that they have to demonstrate that, you know, that their IPP is up to speed, that their, you know, their documentation is up to speed, that their employment practices, they're following their own, their handbook is up to speed, that it's being reviewed. And we look at their losses, generally it takes two or three years for a district in this plan, that we do for them, we don't charge them, but they're not in the pool program, because they have to be as good as the membership or close to it. Otherwise, if they come in with a bunch of losses, it's gonna cost the other 290 members. So it's a tough process, and we boot members out.
Okay, good, that was one of my questions. What's the distribution like of your membership? Is it pretty much evenly distributed or more clumped, Southern California versus Northern?
Mostly Southern, most of my district, and most of the larger districts are in Southern California. And when I say large, I'm going by payroll, so now we're talking payrolls of 12, 15 million. Orange County's probably closer to 20, 25 million now. EID is pretty high up there as well, because of the number of employees. So yes, generally our smaller districts are up north, I mean, you know, when I think of, when I, you know, we have a couple of districts that's just the board, that's all they have, they have no employees, you know, the board president goes out and picks up the weir and watches on his minute and, you know, how many minutes the water ran underneath there, and then puts it in his notepad and writes it down, but he's part of the state water contractors group, so that's what they do. But for the most part, the very, yes, mostly Southern California and most of the larger districts are down in Southern California.
So what does it take to kick somebody out? Is it?
Takes two-thirds vote of the, Ken and his group on the board of directors, takes a two-thirds vote to do that.
And the folks that are considered for getting kicked out, is that excessive claims? Is it a risk profile?
Combination, excessive claims is what kinda clues us into it. The last one we booted out is Central Basin. Central Basin is in LA County, Ron Calderon's group, the senator that's under investigation here, and I get Google alerts on them all the time now. But basically, when I took them to the board, when we took them to the board to boot them out, of their five directors, four of them were involved in claims. Four separate claims. One of them was suing the district on, is it Taicam, Quitan?
Oh, Quitan.
Quitan. One of them suing the district, she's a director, they're suing the district on that. That's one claim I'm defending. Another one got in an automobile accident and decided, oh, I was on district business when I was doing it, and my driver's license was suspended and I had no insurance. I had, I had another one where they fired a general manager, and all this guy could do after we, we had a settlement there, this board member just kept saying, yeah, anybody that would listen, that guy was an SOB and he was a lying cheat, and he must have stole a million dollars from us. And he kept doing it. And we said, you can't say that anymore, we have a settlement. He kept doing it. So now where this claim is reopened.
Oh no.
And then another one, sexual harassment. Cost me $600,000 to get out of that sexual harassment class. So, why do you think the board so easily voted to boot them out? You know, I would say that generally for districts, and it's interesting, because John and I have this argument, you know, about how you determine what's a good and bad district, I would say over time, it comes down to management. If you see a lot of change in general managers, that's almost always a clue for me, if you're seeing Rainbow, they were changing general manager about once every eight months, every 10 months there. Board would come in, growth, they needed a new manager, the old one would sue. The new board would come in and they'd be no growth, they needed a new manager, fired the old one, that one would sue, and then the board would change again. So that type of change, if you see a lot of change at the board, and then subsequently a lot of change in management, those are generally the districts, those are on our radar. And so one of the first things we do when a new member applies, get on the internet, start seeing the newspaper, the local newspaper, who's out there, what's going on, is there a big battle? And we've had a couple of districts where we just said, you know, you just don't fit our risk profile right now, thank you very much. But you had constant battles of directors involved with each other there. I mean, Yorba Linda, or not Yorba Linda, Real Linda, got their act together, and finally that community got their thing and booted it out. But, I mean, literally, we had on YouTube, you know, two board members wanting to go outside and just settle this vote this way, man, literally on YouTube. And that's what we brought to our board, when we threatened to kick them out and the board gave them one more try, went to the next election cycle and the community just basically started over again. And they're doing well. Rainbow Water District in San Diego, it was quite their losses, you know, and that was that growth, no growth, and you just, every time a new general manager came on, the old one sued, and it became too expensive to keep them.
Is there some kind of annual statement or periodic review where you kind of give each of the members kind of the full examination, these were the claims received, these are the folks who received claims, kind of an assessment of who's incurring risk or damages to the pool and who's been good, so to speak?
Yes, and what we look at there is we have what we have, is called, we do it in a couple of different ways. We have what we, at every conference, we do our president's award, I guess it's at the fall conference, we do our president's award, and we recognize those districts with a loss ratio less than 20%. And the loss ratio is, what are your losses compared to your premiums? And if you're down at the, I mean, you know, in the private industry, 45% is a home run, so 20% is, you know, grand slam in the World Series type thing. That, that's not unusual for us though, but you did, but then you do see a ranking of where everybody's at, and every time we do a report on how the program is doing, there's a listing of losses greater than like 100,000, and you can see every district and a description of that loss.
Our LAFCO board got an award like that at one of our conventions.
Oh, is that right?
For insurance.
Okay.
So other institutions do that too.
Yeah.
Give awards to people.
Yeah, you wanna recognize those that are doing well, and those that are, like I said, if you have a good, generally if you have good men, accidents are gonna happen, that's a given, they're gonna happen at some point or another, I'm okay with that, the program. The E-mod is kinda neat, so we, so to keep going here, so we bill you a deposit premium at the beginning of the year, for this year and only this year. And that year will stand alone, all of the claims will only apply to that policy year, so it'll take me 10, 15 years to close a policy year. So at any given time, I have 10 plus policy years open with different claims open at that time. But afterwards, when it's all said and done, and we start, four years, we start what we call retrospective premium adjustments. So, we literally go back in, we gave you a deposit premium and then we recalculate what that year costs. And if it, if we collected too much, which is generally the case, knock on wood, then that money goes back to the member agencies. And I'll show you, you know, this last year, we gave back $2.5 million to member agencies there. And, and that happened, every year, we make that process. So, that-
What's, what's the process to change the premium? Is that the Executive Board? Is that a vote of the membership?
It would be the Executive Committee has the authority to change that process.
Okay. And is it just a simple majority?
Yes.
I forget, was there seven?
Yeah, there's nine.
Oh, nine?
Yes.
And-
It would probably go through the liability program first, if that's, if we're talking about the liability program. It'd go through that committee first. And then made up of directors, directors and staff from around the state. They would look at it, analyze it and then decide if that's something that goes forward to the Executive Committee. I know, I've been here for a while now, haven't I? I will just show you that, you know, you didn't get a refund last year, but in the last several years here, 73,056, 74. So, that's a result of that retro process and, and where you're at in that. And those are the refunds you've received.
We didn't get one in 13?
No. It's a very stable program. It, we, I don't see hardly change in that program. You know, the membership, it grows a little bit each year, but not much. We have, like I said, 370 water agencies. There's about 400, little more than 400 around the state that would qualify. So, we're, we're pretty much there. We only do public water agencies. We don't do dentists, we don't do police, we don't do fire. It only public water agency. Like I said, there's membership requirements. You have to demonstrate to get in and then you have to keep performing or it gets brought to the Board. There's a stabilization fund, so your premium in the liability program can't change more than, so if you did have a bad loss, it couldn't go up more than 10% in a given year. It's capped at that. And you know what? Of my 83 members that started this back in 1978, I think 78 of them are still part of the program and now it's 390. JPAs, they cost less. It's member controlled, that's the big thing to take away from it. It's, it's there by the members for the members. All we do are water districts. You set policy. If you have an idea, let somebody on staff know about premiums. I would advise you, come on down, take a look at it, see what it is. At any point, you can see anything. That's our website. That's it. If you have any more questions, told you I'd get going there if you-
Yeah, that was-
Once you start asking questions.
770 and 290, how many water districts are there?
There's about, there's about 400-plus water districts in the state of California that would qualify for our program. Like I said, a county, something associated with a county or city wouldn't qualify. And we have about 370 of those 400-plus out there.
Thank you very much, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
So, I don't want to say any questions and now it's-
You did good.
Okay. I appreciate you letting me talk to you about this and I noticed that they, over here under Wally, you have a certificate, which I very, very appreciate because that's your agreement that you've made with the Joint Powers Insurance Authority to really do what I've seen your district doing for the last 15 years, is partnering with us and doing, doing something very special. And that is not only reducing the cost for your insurance, but also ensuring that your mission is very reliable. Because costs also create mission issues. You lose a person, how are you going to do your job? How many non-essential people do you have on your payroll? How many non-essential backhoes and pickup trucks and so forth do you have? So, in the long run, my staff, in particular in risk management, we're out here to try to find ways that you can reduce the losses in all the programs that you have there. And the idea is to save you money, but also the other side of the coin that we like is we're also trying to help you accomplish, retain a good mission reliability rate, if you will. Okay, let's see if I can get this thing to work. Oop, not that one. How about that one? Okay. And truth, that's exactly what this is. The, the Commitment to Excellence Program is really not anything new. We've been doing this, working with your staff, your staff has been working with us because if you notice that the, the decrease in claims that Andy showed you on the slides before, that's a result of what you all have done, what the pool has done. Now, we're just a conduit. We come out and try to give you some resources, one of which I'll talk to you a little bit in a minute because I gave you a copy of it. But we try to come up with resources like that and help the process out, but your folks are the ones that are doing the job. And doing a pretty darn good job. It's doing so good that we had to come up with some ways that we could make it better. So, what we're looking at truly is reducing severity and the frequency of, of costs, or losses in particular. Now, the severity part comes with good claims management and a few other things. But in terms of frequency, we're looking at ways we can reduce the potential for the losses to occur. And really, truly, saving dollars, the dollars also create, equates to mission as well. Here's what we looked at. Now, over the last, again too, I've been with JPA now for about 16 years. But we've looked at our losses across that period of time and we're finding out the biggest losses for the entire pool and for you all as a result too, because you share in this pool, come from vehicle losses, construction-related losses, infrastructure issues and employment practices claims and ergonomic-related issues, work comp-related, falls, strains, muscle strains. This is not just typical, it's typical for everybody. It's not focusing on you, it's looking at the entire program, but everybody has a piece of this pie. Okay? When I talk about, this is what we looked at. We, we got down until a little bit farther down into the last maybe five years or so. This is, this is actually a presentation they gave to our Board of Directors last year. Is, you know, auto claims, things are going down, they're getting better, but can they go down farther? Can we reduce the losses that much more? If Andy had taken those losses and stretched them out to 2,000, you would have seen that chart really decrease. But we leveled off a little bit and we'd like to get down below that if we can. So, there's a lot of liability claims out there, a biggie. This is, this is severity-wise is at the bottom of the chart, of course, and your, your claims count is at the top. Again, they're reducing and that's good. Employment practices, this can be very, very misleading. It goes up and down, up and down, but one or two claims can raise the severity level for the entire program out of sight. So, just getting, you know, looking at that in particular and paying attention to it is going to be very important for all of us, including you folks. I would talk about infrastructure, you know, maintaining your, your systems, knowing where the systems are to begin with. Doing really well. Claims-wise, the 2008, '09 was probably, what, Yorba Linda area timeframe, was it? Okay. But you notice how the frequencies are going down and ideally the, and ideally severity will as well. Now, work comp is a little different. You know, we looked at that and we go, "Gosh, you know, work compensation is a little bit everything." But the biggies for us is right here, slip trips and falls and strains. Don't get a lot of cut, punctures, don't really get a lot of struck by injuries like this of the, of the top ones that OSHA looks at. So, what we're really focusing in this case is on, hey, can we get rid of some of the muscular skeletal injuries, the things that causes pains and strains that really cost a lot of money? And one claim can be over $100,000 depending on what the nature of the emergency, or the problem is with the individual. And you get a couple of those, things really get out of hand, get out of sight in terms of cost. But again too, how many non-essential people do you have? Can you really do your mission if you lose one or two for any period of time? You know, so we have, we've got a good hook out here. We're going fishing, so I'll throw the bait out, dollars of people and I can get double return, I can get two fish at one time on that one. So, this is kind of what we're looking at. But what we found was this, where the staff has been working with us and your staff works with us real well. I'll come out and I'll give some recommendations and some things that hopefully will reduce your losses and I'll get a response back saying, "Yep, we fixed it." And I'll come back, you know, maybe six months later and I'll take a look, I'll do follow-up. "Yeah, you fixed it." Not that I don't trust you, but you know, trust, verify is a really good thing to use. But I will come out and I'll do the training with the idea that, hey, maybe something that we have learned from other districts or from the industry, whatever could be used to help you reduce your costs. And in that case, I can talk to your entire staff as opposed to just one person that takes me around. Really, it's a partnership because that's what that agreement was for. Will you partner with us? And what we're looking at is, is this. We're looking at a long-term process. If we continue this down the road, we hope to see that the claims, that plateau in the number of frequency and, and severity of claims go even further, which again, should turn into a good, a good thing for all of us. But what we really needed and what that certificate shows is that you, you've agreed to partner with us. In reality, you have been partnering with us for a long time, but we're really thinking, we're really trying to get a hold of you folks, the leadership and say, "Really, it's important for us to know that you're on board with us. Will you agree to this partnership where we can help support you, but you're in agreement with that as well?" And that's what the certificate is. It's nothing more than a agreement that, hey, you'll partner us as best you possibly can to help, you know, develop the best practices, to help your staff get the training they need to reduce costs. And here's what our focus is. You know, we've got some best practices that we've identified right here. Now, this is, this I, I give to all our members. This is what we call a menu. Within the menu, there's a checklist, there's a bunch of focus items. And what we've done on this one is we've identified which each one of those focus item menus is. And we're saying, we're, we're work with you on this. These are best practices we've gotten from industry, other districts, from our own, our own experiences and so forth. These are some of the things that if we implement them, can help reduce the losses that are out there. Will you work with us on it? All we're asking is to take a look. Take a look at them, see which ones you're already doing, which is not bad. We had one district that did a presentation to the Board and said, "Hey, based on what the JPI has, this is what we're doing, this is what we're doing. This doesn't apply to us." But they at least knew by taking a look at the menu, what they are already eating as far as the menu goes. And then we asked them, "What do you want to eat next? What do you want to do?" Because that's where we'll help out. Because we have the resources, we'll help provide you with them. It's really kind of up to you all. These things are not rocket science, there's not a whole lot new in it, but a couple of little extra things done along the way could help out in the long run. So, we have supporting resources, Andy covered a lot of it. We have training, we have consultations. We're your resource, but we want to know what you want to do. Okay? So, here it is. In truth, it's a partnership and we're willing to work with you on it. I work with, I work with John Price in the past, now working with Keith. We're all on board with this. We go over this every time I come out, see where you're at, where you want to go. And I'm happy to come out and help. I've got other staff that can. And we have people in human resources that can help you as well. It's not just the operations side, we've got the management side too that can be here for you. And that's what Andy's here for right now, to help you a little bit more understand who we are. So, that's my presentation. Are there any questions?
Do you do anything at the plant?
Excuse me?
Do you do anything up at the plant?
I have been up there. I go up and we take a look at the facilities and I look for liability issues, maybe property, potential property loss issues. And then again too, obviously look at the issues that could deal with workers' compensation. I don't get involved with your operations at all, but you know, if I see an operations that deviates from what Cal OSHA requires or I know there's a best practice issue goes with it, I'll make a recommendation.
The reason I ask is you said Price and, and Keith, but you didn't mention Jim.
Yeah, I mentioned Jim, go up there. You've got a whole bunch of folks down there, I work with a lot. But I haven't worked too much with Jim except in a couple of things, dealing with the plant. I know you're in the middle of a, a pretty big operation and I've kind of tried to stay back away and let that, let that go. But yeah, I've worked with him a couple of times in confined space work as a matter of fact. Thank you.
I have a question for you. Do you, you know, you've got all these various things that you look at and highlight as hotspot areas. Do you have anything in regard to Board, Boards like ours and the interaction within a Board or the interaction with Boards and, and staff, for example?
Yes, sir, sure do.
You do?
Andy brought, brought that to light. One of the next level, one of the next specialties we have in our professional development program is that leadership training, that management leadership training for, for Boards, general managers, people you're, you're raising up to the various levels. And I think we cover things like what Brown Act and ethics training for sure.
We do, we do ethics and we do this sexual harassment training. As far as, we do have a plastic hospital resolution that we have provided to the member agencies. Generally, I don't see it at the Board at the level that we've done it. The only other thing that really we've done that's kind of unique is I have a little presentation I do sometimes, it's called "Arguing Cover." And "Arguing Cover" is actions of your Board, you know? You have very broad coverage, but sometimes Board members don't know kind of where it ends and where it stops. And of course, in scope of your duties, you know, the long and short, of course, in scope of your duties, I'm going to cover here. You know, if somebody gets in here and throws a ruckus during a Board meeting and somebody gets injured, you're covered. But if you walk down to the local bar, say, and Board employee go down to that local bar and you decide that somebody's bad knocking bar, just to begin their function, you're going to be on your own on that. That's not the course of your duty. But it's amazing though, how many times particularly new Board members come in to a Board that have a different view of what their responsibilities are. I think the sessions I do is kind of just to be aware, you could cost yourself personally some money here and you could cost the district some money here in sexual harassment.
Okay.
You know, on the flip side of that, let's say you go down to that bar and you're just sitting there minding your business and someone comes up and starts the conflict with you or then, even though you weren't sent to that bar on Board-
It would be hard for, it would be hard for me to justify that. Would be interesting, it'd be hard to justify that that's in the course of scope of your duties. You could make the argument that he was here accosting me because I'm a Director of the Board-
Public, public figure, right.
And he was mad at the rate increase that just happened and he took it out on me specifically as a member of the Board. I'd be hard pressed to say I couldn't find coverage for you there, but certainly there would be some discussion with this person and if it also turned out that, you know, your next door neighbors and your fence is two inches over on his property.
You shot his dog.
That's the type of, type of flexibility that we have with your management if you have a third-party administrator. Even that pool doesn't, that claim person's just in no way that they're going to find a way over that.
So, if somebody's over, using too much water, you can't beat them up, huh?
I wouldn't recommend it. I haven't used that method of showing it all and giving them-
And one, one thing to answer your question too, remember, we're working for a big pool now. Usually the second day of our conferences that we have, like for instance, in May, when we have our, the first day, Monday, we have a lot of these meetings. The second day, we do a lot of, we offer a lot of training that deals with management-related stuff, a lot, just what Andy said. So, we're really going after the, the, the whole pool if we can, as many people that we can get to come to these conferences, the Aqua Conference in particular. So, yes, we do. It's, it's available there and by request too.
Okay.
Andy, you mentioned in your earlier comments that some directors decided to go out and settle in the parking lot. Well, in the mid-'50s, I'd just gotten back from the service. The office was down where Fire Station Number One is now. And my wife was actually working for PID in the office here. And I attended a meeting because I was interested in water rights, we had a rash and all kinds of stuff like that. And they did have a round of fisty cuffs up the parking lot. And they all went down to the lion's den, which is the Cantina now, and had a hell of a great evening and solved the problem, I guess. I went home because I had the cow, I had cow's milk the next morning. I went home because I had the cow, I had cow's milk the next morning.
So are you advocating?
No, I'm not advocating, I'm just saying.
I'm glad to hear that you're not advocating.
History, I'm not advocating anything, I'm just saying history repeats itself. I'm a history buff.
I know. Thank you for the story.
Refresh my memory, where's the Aqua Conference?
But it wouldn't surprise me once again.
Sacramento.
In the first two days, you could go to that, there's no fee for that. That's our session. So I know there's a fee to go to Aqua, but for the, like, if you wanted to come down for the Tuesday sessions, we are going to do a little kickoff on the, that program. And then Tom Shear's going to be there, talk some more about the future of healthcare and some of the latest developments, you know, the global care act. I don't know if you know, IRS has put some regulations out, we're starting to get some of that data in, so we'll talk about that. There's always a secoraration class at your meet, a class you can come down, and there's no fee for that part of the, our part of that.
And you can come to defensive driving class, too, and we'd be happy to have you, right?
We came here.
That was an excellent class, though.
Is there anything else?
Thank you.
Okay.
And we are going to pick up our pace a little bit, not that you've slowed us down too much. And we're going to move to new business. And thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. It was more than I expected, very thorough and entertaining, good, good quality meat on the bone. Demonstration garden. Manager Barber?
I'm going to stay proper a little bit here. I'll point in your direction.
Well, we'll, we'll give you, we'll, we'll fix this up for you. We'll, we'll take a break after this, a little, a little break after this issue, and that might be a time to move on out.
Okay. This item's on the agenda because the conservation committee's been speaking about this demonstration garden, vegetable garden initially is what it's thought for quite some time. It never came to the board for full approval. As a manager, I've put some of my concerns about, you know, the what ifs. It's a great idea to have volunteers come and put this garden together and demonstrate good water practices, et cetera, but you know, what happens if those volunteers don't step up, or what's the expectations of the board? Those are the things I want you to think of for the long term is, is taking on this project, because I, I hate to have something out there that starts as a wonderful thing, but then doesn't.
Six foot, six foot weeds are growing out there.
Weeds are growing up, and am I expected to have our guys on payroll pulling weeds because it looks like garbage? And those are the kind of things that come to mind as a manager. So I'll just open it up to Doug as the committee chair to add to this. We're, we're, the committee recommended to continue to move forward with this project. We don't have to hammer out all the details of, do we really want to do this, or, or I mean, not who, do we, but how do we want to do this? We can hammer those out later, but we want board support for the concept and some money to, to get some initial expenses, what they really want to get out there as a sign that lets people know this is the future home of, et cetera. So that'll turn it over to Doug.
Okay, good, thank you, George. This is actually our second year of having that plot out there. The first year, we planted in the fall of the year with the, our staff doing a bunch of the cleaning. I think they hauled something like 12 dump truck loads of building materials and other crap that was stacked out there. We're talking about the piece up here. And then we went in and planted a cover crop using Director Kellogg's seed, he donated it. And we hit some real cold weather and drought conditions, and we did have some coverage there, and it did grow pretty well. And then we ran into the drought, we had a pretty good head of steam on this project as far as doing it. And it started out as a vegetable garden, and this came out of the community. One of the leading people behind it is one of our local eye doctors here, Dr. Di Pietro, came up with the idea because of the fact that it actually is located like a lot of gardens are in Paradise. And we had a pretty good head of steam up on the thing with a lot of support, and then of course, we hit the drought, so we backed off of it. And went into it just like we would, and there's going to be a lot of stuff in the valley doing the same thing. And then this last year, we went back in and here again, our staff used tobacco to do some utility work on it. And we planted another cover crop, and that's what's growing out there, Kellogg's got some stuff that he picked out of it. And so as far as stewards of the ground, we're doing exactly what you should be doing if you're in a fallow situation, because it's a plant mix, it's legumes, and it really enhances the soil. And you can see this year's over last year's what we had. And the minute that we ran into the drought, we started putting it on hold and we didn't take it any further. And we, you know, I've given reports on this, but like George was saying, we never really got the sanction out of the board for that. I can see where he's coming from. And those are not weeds out there growing at all. They're plants from a cover crop that, there's thousands of acres been planted, and I've planted quite a number of them in my career. And so this is what you were doing, I do this in my place all the time, I know Alwee's has done that on his, and it really works. And, but I see where George is coming from, weeds this tall.
Are those weeds?
No, those are not weeds. Those are plants. Hold them up, Bill, and tell us what they are. We've got some herbicide damage, is what we've got. In other words, you can see the herbicide damage. And we don't know how they got in there, but anyway.
Any rate, these things shouldn't be bent over like this, this is herbicide spray. Somebody sprayed about three feet into the project, looks like phenoxine, that's the only reason I picked these up. But this is a belveen plant that won't be alive too much longer at all, obviously I'll cut it down. This is a vetch was the other thing I picked on. Vetch really responds to 240 and, or phenoxine spray that somebody sprayed for whatever it was. I'm hoping it wasn't any sterilant in it, but there's rocks along the edge, and whoever sprayed it went three feet into the garden, and these things are all dying.
That's not a who, that would have been our contractor.
Okay.
And.
Our gardener?
No, no, we have a we, our sprayer guy, and we had some Scotch broom on that property, maybe not in this area, but, and so he was spraying for Scotch broom, poison oak or whatever, I'm not sure exactly.
He probably used 240 yesterday, I've talked to him before.
I would imagine.
And, but it's, part of the garden is wiped out. This is, this is a lack of communication probably with staff, somebody explained to him that this is a cover crop and he should have taken a backpack sprayer and just sprayed spots where the Scotch broom is.
That's called drift. I've been teaching pesticides for pushing 60 years now. That's called drift. And I had some of this at my house a couple of years ago, because I went wild with the damn Roundup with another mix in it. But anyway, so what we're doing is we're enhancing the soil out there, and even though this might die, it's done its job because of the fact we got the roots down for water penetration, and it's already fixed nitrogen in the ground. And my thought on it, and we shared this with the others, if we have any water rationing, where we have any water rationing at all, and we kind of, George and I was talking about it at one of the conservation meetings, if it's spilling, well, then that's all the water we'll ever have, you know? So that puts a whole different light on it, right, George? Okay. So we're what, six foot, four feet from spill, whatever it is. But my thought on it, just strictly my thought, if we have any water restriction, well, then I don't think we as a district want to have something growing up here that's going to require water. And so what we would do if we have water restrictions, on April 1st, we might wind up on that. But anyway, we would go in and we would mow this and see what's left after this type of thing, kind of work it up, called following, as he put in here. And then this fall, if we want to continue, we plant another cover crop, because every year we do that, it enhances the soil.
There are going to be mandatory state laws and restrictions on outdoor watering. You may have read about it in the paper.
Yeah.
The meeting happened in Sacramento yesterday.
It was heard it on the news this morning.
Yeah, the, the options are going to be no more than six watering days per week, so you have to have one day where everybody cannot water. Or what the state's preference is, you only have two days per week where there's watering permitted.
And I can tell you from our standpoint, we're not going to spill by April 1st. And we're probably not going to spill early enough in the spring that you could pull together volunteers to get a garden going this year, any of them.
But you know, we, we decided not to sell that property, and so it would be a decision that we would have to make in the conservation committee. But say if we do not plant anything in the summer where there's drought resistant plants or whatever it happens to be, well, then this fall, we would go back in and work it up and plant another cover crop, and it would be good stewards to the ground. And that's exactly what I'm going to be doing on my own property.
Well, I don't think we'd want to put a sign up, though, would we?
Don't ask me.
Oh, okay.
But what we would do is a sign, you know, Cedar Creek, we would just inform the people what we were doing, you see. We can make a very positive sign out of it, you know.
Coming soon?
Well, because of the drought, we're conserving and not doing this, something like that.
See, what we would do, and that was already gone through George and Jim, I guess, we would put a meter in, so we could really monitor it and use technique, irrigation techniques somewhat like Alwee's has developed for us, where we could really monitor it, the wise use, you know. But if there's any water restrictions, which apparently there's going to be, I would think we ought to put the garden itself on hold, but we would like, I would still, because of what we've done on the conservation committee, is to have the board, unless you don't think it's a good idea, approve the doggone thing, and then when we have time or, or water on our side, we can continue on with it, you know. And of course, we would not be spending any money until that happens. And the big thing we would have, in fact, I had it lined up with Northern Fence, I've worked with them on some other projects, we would have had a temporary construction type fence around part of it with a gate in the front, primarily for deer, you know, and like, I keep pointing at Alwee's because one of the top gardeners in this area here has a chain leak fence, and I want, by the way, but you have a sign on here that it's for deer, right? Keep the deer out. That's worth, so we would do that. And Northern, Northern Fence was really to work with us on that. John, I know John quite well.
What else do I need to say? Well, I got a couple of questions.
Yes.
If we mow it, isn't it just going to grow back up?
No.
No?
It'll all die.
They'll quit, they'll die no matter what.
Oh, okay.
If you don't water them, it doesn't matter even if you don't, if you water them, they're just going to die.
Okay. Second, second question. Second question is this. This is for Water Conservation Committee, this is to show people how to grow things in a drought?
Grow things.
How to take care of things, how to be wise with using water?
In a drought, this is, the idea is how to use water wisely and normally.
Yeah, best practices during any time.
Oh, okay, because I was going to say, if it's to focus and show people how to use drought resistant plants, then this is the right time to do that. Do it while the damn drought's going on, so they can see what we were able to do.
Those we have more around the actual building here, all this stuff that's playing.
I don't know.
Get a drought plant to grow without any water?
I don't know.
If we continue with the idea of a vegetable garden, and that's how it was presented to us by people out of the community, well, then we would, we would be showing the wise use of water through technology and sprinklers and all of that if the reservoir was spilling.
Okay, and that was the original direction?
That was the original direction.
Okay, then we'll stay with the original direction.
And then we ran into this drought, and we put it on hold because of the fact that if we're asking people to restrict any of their watering, I don't think we should have.
We should restrict ours.
Exactly.
I, that, yeah, I, I agree with that, I really, I think I do.
It's a great committee, and they've really been working on different things.
I'd like to make a motion. I move approval for the conservation committee to continue the development of the conservation garden's concept and authorize $2,000 for initial expenses.
I'll second.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll discuss it.
Can I get a clarification?
Yeah. That's what I was asking.
Some talk about the sign going up, and some talk about the sign not going up. I think part of this money was for putting a sign, future home of, so we need some direction of what, what the board pleasure is relative to signage.
I would think a very inexpensive sign at this point stating that this is a future project, and then once the, the garden got going, once we get out of a drought situation or whatever it is, and we, then we want something that's maybe a little bit nicer and, you know, that says Paradise Irrigation Demonstration Garden. That'd be my thought. But at this point, we're not going to spend a bunch of money on a sign.
Okay, but I don't, I don't understand something here. If we're just going to mow it and leave it fallow, why do we need $2,000?
He came up with the $2,000.
You're not, you're looking at the wrong person, you need to.
That was for the sign, and for them to start developing materials. Handouts, this is what we're going to do, there's time about individual signage up there.
Well, my, my thought, and just my thought on this, if we're in a drought situation, which apparently we're going to, well, then we wouldn't be spending any of the 2,000. But it would be in there if we moved out of the drought down the road, you know, or when we got ready to put a demonstration garden in, which would be the meter and the sign and some of the irrigation equipment. Does that make you sense? But if we follow the ground, which means it's just disc up or worked up, you know, and we know weeds growing, and if there's weeds growing, then we'll get in and take care of those during the summer, there would be no cost at all, none.
It might be that we don't want to make any kind of sign for a future home of at this point and spend any money on it until.
If you're not going to water it, I wouldn't want to put a sign up myself, you know. We're a failure.
If we're approving the budget for it, though, it doesn't mean it has to be spent at this point.
Yeah. I wouldn't want to make, you know, I've always been talking, I've always been talking, you don't advertise when you're not doing something. We're not, we're not a failure. Well, no, wait, 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 wait. We're anything but a failure. We're handling it exactly the way science, this proper stewardship of the ground should be handled.
Right, okay.
I just don't want to spend any money telling people about it. I'll, I'll buy that, that's all right.
I would make an amendment to the, the motion that we do not spend any money out of the budget until we're in a water healthy situation.
Before, before I ask for a second?
What do you want to say?
George, did you want to clarify?
Staff member, if you're going to strike the expenses out of the motion, then let's not have a motion because.
Just let it go until that point.
If we're going to actually approve moving forward, then I want a further discussion with the committee and the board of what's the expectation of volunteers, of staff, of what's it going to look like, et cetera, and have the board approve that. There's no point in approving this if you're not going to authorize any expenses.
Let me interject something, because I was the one that was involved in, in some of the leadership on it. And we had three very strong master gardeners that were really interested in it, and the garden club was very interested in it at that time, and that was when everything was peachy keen as far as water is concerned, you know. And the minute we ran into the drought situation, well, that dried up, and we could still have volunteers fizzle, because that happens all the time.
And we need to have a fallback plan for if the volunteers don't show. What are we going to be doing with that?
Your expectation, yes.
My expectation would be if the volunteers don't show up, we plow it under, smooth it out, throw some bark down, and call it good.
That has happened before.
That's going to cost money.
That is, in the valley, that's happened before, but one of the things, if you'll notice around Chico, people will damn near kill for a 10 by 10 plot to grow things on, you know, and they're growing it on some of the craziest elements in the world, you know. And a couple of years ago, I helped them plant some cover crops on some of that soil, and it really helps as much as you can, you know. Most of that soil allows Bruce roads and all that kind of stuff. You have to bring your own dirt if you really want to grow something.
Shoot, maybe we could rent it out to those people in Chico.
Can we just let it go back to the committee and let the committee, they're very interested as a committee, and anxious to do something with understanding that if it doesn't rain enough, we'll do just what Doug's suggesting. But rather than the board taking every little part of this, that's the part of the committee, and the committee can bring it back to the board and.
With a more definite plan.
Yeah, with a more definite plan. You give them $2,000, they know what they can plan or can't plan to do, and, and just leave it at that, rather than taking the time tonight for the board to, to micro manage a small garden that's 20 by 40, I think, or something like that.
So you're saying give them the $2,000?
Give them the $2,000 and trust they'll do the right thing. Because that's, and if, we can come back to you and say, well, we want to do this, this, and this, but let the committee decide what they want to do. That's what the committee is all about, rather than having it be a discussion for another 20 minutes in the board.
Well, you know, what we can also do is, I have been bringing it up every time, and it's on another spot in here, when we get to that point, we'll make sure that the board is completely informed on it and, and get your direction. We just had a audience tell us that we did something wrong because we got charged $1,800 for the election and we gave that money away. Now we're spending $2,000 on something that we shouldn't even be doing.
Don't know if you're going to spend any.
Well, we're, we're authorizing it, and I think that's the same as spending.
No, I don't think in this case, I think we're just, we're taking a little tea kettle and.
As I understand it, if you don't want something done, you don't fund it. And that's my philosophy. I don't want to fund it because I don't think we should do anything with it now until we're out of a drought.
We're to the point where we have a motion and a second on, on the $2,000 for initial expenses. Any further staff input right now? Any further board discussion before I ask the public for input? Okay, I'll open this up to the public. Do we have anybody out there? The guy with his hand raised? Come on up.
New blood.[1760.87]
Thank you, board, Lauren Harvey. Sad as this moment is for me, I totally concur with Mr. Duncan. I, I, um, I would, I would like to see the board put this thing at a stop. Two reasons, one is, we're spending more than we're taking in, but obviously it's gonna be a drought, and why fool with that thing? And then I'd like you to think about this. Say next year it rains so much that we all got gloss shoes on in here, and, and you put in a tomato garden and a, and some cucumbers and a couple pieces of corn, there's no fence around that. You have your insurancemen here. It looks like to me that's an attractive nuisance, that close to the sidewalk. If somebody goes in there to pick some of those vegetables and they fall down, your insurance agent's gonna be covering that responsibility. So I think we need to think about, if we're really gonna do that out there, it needs to at least have a fence around it if you're gonna, if you're gonna go ahead with it. But definitely don't spend no money on it now, we haven't got it to spend, and there's no water to water it anyway, it's silly. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. That, that sounded like that was a vote for a no trespassing sign.
If we planted something, there'd be a problem putting a fence up. And we would've had one there if we hadn't run into the drought.
Yeah.
By Northern Fest.
Okay. Any other public wanna speak to this issue? Back to the board. Any, any further comments or discussion to make before we vote? Nah, there being none, then those in favor of the motion to authorize the $2,000 for initial expenses, say aye.
Aye.
Say that again, are we voting for or against?
For it.
Well, for it.
For, for spending the, or authorizing the $2,000 for initial expenses, say aye. I heard. Any opposed, say no.
No.
No. It sounded to me like it's a, it was voted down three to two, with Directors Kellogg and Flesher being on the short end of the, the little stick there.
We're used to the comment, I think.
This is a comment, I, I think the committee.
Absolutely nothing new.
I think it's good that the committee should come back with a plan.
And, and they will.
Of course they have.
If it rains, you want us to come back, huh?
We'll, we'll do that. But even if it had a pass, if there were any kind of a restricted water use, and I agree with Lauren on this completely, because, you know, we're right to be.
Okay, at this time, we're going to try and take about a 3 minute 48 second break. Let's try to keep it under five minutes.
There you go.
And we'll be, we'll, we'll come back at that time. I'm going to reconvene, was that not?
Forty-six, forty-five.
No, it wasn't loud enough, was it? I'm gonna reconvene the meeting at 8:50, and we're gonna be moving into the committee reports is the next item. And the first up is Local Agency Formation Commission, Director Duncan, do you have a report for us?
Right, okay, I have two, actually. We had a Budget Committee meeting on the, the 4th of March, which was my birthday. So they did give me a donut with a candle in it.
Did you declare that on your Form 700?
No, I gave it to my wife. And anyway, and the good news is, is that, uh, uh, we've approved a increase in the manager's contract to five years. And, uh, we, and then they're arranging, it's a 2% increase, and, and it's gonna be very little effect on our, on our dues. In fact, the dues are based on revenue, they may even go down, I'm hoping. If it's not based on payroll, I think it's due on root revenue, and our revenue's going down. And so LAFCO dues are based on revenue, so that'll, that'll help us on that end. On the meeting, we, I don't see where is my agenda happen? We met, we met on the, the 5th. Oh, come on, where are you, I'll hear this. That's the budget, let me see. Okay, here. Okay, we met on the, uh, the 5th of March, and, um, we did, we approved an employment, an employment agreement with the executive officer, extending it for five years. And, uh, um, there's, the off, the manager has said that we furloughed, we furloughed most of our employees because of our, the economy several years ago, and they've grown to like it. And so I think that we're, it, those people we're gonna hire in the office, I think there's gonna be plenty of people who will apply for it. So I think, I think people don't wanna work 40 hours a week if they can get away with it. And, uh, and then we're, we've, we're almost signing an agreement with, um, Chico on annexing the Chaplain and that, and they did, they did finally vote to approve it. But we made, we gave them a, set it out to five years. And then they're going to pay us the money we owe, they owe us, and that'll bring our, we've deleted our reserve, and so that'll bring it back up. And, uh, that's working good. And then the city of Oroville, we approved a Lower One Dot Road annexation. And, uh, they're looking into quite a few annexations in Oroville also, of the, of the islands, which is taking at least 30 years to get it through.
Wow.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Water Conservation Committee, Chairperson, Director Flesher.
I, I kinda think we've already talked enough about that, don't you?
We, we did, I just wanted to give you another opportunity.
We're fine, we'll keep you, we'll keep you posted. We have another meeting, looking at being positive about how the world turns in April after our Georgia informers, we most likely have a special meeting, so we're gonna have another one and a follow-up, and then we'll most likely be meeting in June, if we were going to, if we're in a drought situation, you know.
Okay, thank you. Uh, third committee meeting was the Community Relations Committee, that was myself and Director Corolla. By, by the way, I don't know, for the record, Director Corolla is ill and, and left the meeting at the, at the break.
Well, it isn't contagious.
We can all breathe a little easier.
We're hoping.
I, I've been hoping Larry filtered all that air over there before it came out my way.
Thanks a lot.
Anyhow, in regard to the meeting, I'm going to, um, ask our consultants to come up and, and give a, an overview of it. I've got my notes here, I think there might be one or two places where I'll interject something a bit, but would you please, at this time, bring up and regale us?
Community Relations Committee this time, we kinda blend because we attend so many of the different committee meetings, so we can bring a lot of concerns and how they're gonna be communicated to the Community Relations Committee. One of those, of course, is conservation, drought. Right now, if you looked at the, um, the newspaper stands today, three newspapers, Two Grand Press Record, Paradise Post, and I think the San Francisco Paper, all of them had about water conservation. It's on people's mind. One of the benefits of being a member of Aqua, not only is JPIA, as, as the gentleman here, we're talking about, what, but is also the resources available from Aqua to the district as we look at, um, community, as we look at conservation and water conservation. Aqua had a webinar early March to talk about their approach for, um, how they're going to be conservation messaging this year. We shared it with the concert, with the Community Relations Committee. It was rather interesting, just real briefly, there's not very many of us here today. How many of you feel that the drought and water shortages are extremely or very serious problems? Just raise your hand.
Extreme, you mean?
Extremely or very serious.
I think they are, the rest of California.
Eighty percent of the Californians agreed. Aqua did a study in February to find out what people's concepts and ideas of conservation in the drought were. Some of the things were interesting. Eighty-six percent of the Californians agreed we essentially live in a state of persistent drought. Aqua is now going to be focusing not on just saying this is a drought situation that we're dealing with, but in their messaging, they're talking about, we are going to, the state as it's designed, as our waterfall is, is in a state of persistent drought. So wise water use, rather than just for the drought that we have to take care of things, and increasing people's awareness to become more water wise all the time, not just when we hear that it's a drought. One of the things that was very interesting, and I think PID, in our messaging for conservation last year, we really did a great job, based on what we found from the survey from Aqua. They felt that, they did a survey, 36% of Californians feel they'd already significantly reduced their water usage, or are doing everything they can. Thirty-six percent of the people said that. Forty-three percent were not willing to do any more conservation, because they felt that they'd already done everything that they could. And the number one reason people gave for not conserving is they think they've already made significant savings and reductions, and the things that are left to reduce their water usage are expensive things. Things like, excuse me, changing their irrigation pattern, their, their whole irrigation system, et cetera. We found that interesting, because Aqua suddenly came through in, at this webinar, and they were telling all these people who are gonna be sending out conservation messages for water districts statewide, that, you know, people are really, um, what do they call it, drought fatigued. They're tired of hearing about it, and instead of hitting people over the head in 2015 with the message of, you gotta conserve, you gotta conserve, you gotta conserve, they're going to, their, their emphasis said Aqua should be positive reinforcement. And the reason why we were pretty happy with that at Cedar Creek is because last year, you guys at Paradise Irrigation District recognized that, you know, those signs that say, "Good job, Paradise, we're saving water", um, "We're saving water" with the thumbs up and the, the okay symbol and stuff. Those are all the messaging that the state's finally deciding, that makes good sense to be messaging. So I just wanted to bring that up to the, to the board, so that they would know kind of where we're gonna be going in 2015. Not always hitting people over the head, but also giving them information for wise water use all the time, as well as congratulating them on the efforts that they're making. And in light of that, we discussed in the committee, different ways of reporting. George always has some great reports on how water usage, so we're gonna fine tune how we report to the public how our water usage is going. One of the things that we're gonna be creating real quickly is a little car wash flyer for those groups right now, it's the time of the year when all the cheerleaders, those are the fun ones to watch, I understand from the guys. But the other groups also do car washes for fundraisers. And, um, there's ways to wash cars and do fundraising that are in line with what the district board of directors had voted and approved last year for wise use of water, having the shut-off nozzles, using a bucket, not letting it go. The water just runs. So what we're going to do is create a small flyer, it's gonna be printed in-house to save funds, and that will explain to fundraising, to groups doing fundraising, the wise way to do a fundraiser, a car wash. And then George indicated that he would have staff distribute those, um, to, like, places like Les Schwab and Coffees on, places where people do those fundraising car washes. So, and the last one was, is something you guys did last, last meeting, okay? And this was something we brought up to the Community Relations Committee. Do you see our media person here today?
You hiding him?
He's really not here, is he? Okay.
He's missing.
He's missing. That's how I want you guys to think and refer to the media when we are in board meetings. There's, it's very easy to have a media person, we all recognize Trevor, 'cause we know I'm wearing a small town. Sometimes we have other people, we have Lauren doing taping, but sometimes we have other media doing things. Media, what we were pointing out to the Community Relations Committee, is that the media are like invisible when they're here. As a board, we would ask you and recommend that you not interact with the media during the board meetings. Asking them questions puts the media member on the spot. When they're on the spot, you know, like, what did you write? Do you remember what you wrote last June or something about that? Don't you remember that article? When you put the media member on the spot, it makes them feel on the spot. None of us like to do that. Their job is to just be here and be writing stuff down, and hopefully taking that back to their office and responding, writing a good article, or writing a factual article about it. But asking them questions when they're here puts them on the spot, they can't do their job well, and it makes it difficult for them to report more easily on what's actually happening. They also may be missing what's actually being said. So Mark and I made the recommendation to Community Relations Committee that we would like to share with the board, and, and the committee said we could, that when media's here, they're invisible. You don't say, oh, don't write that down, because you can be darn sure they're gonna write it down if they want to, whether you say that or not. And you don't put them on the spot and say, how come you wrote this article? Or, why did you do this? It's not the role of the board to interact with media, media are invisible. And that will make their job easier. That's George.
During breaks.
During breaks? That doesn't put them on the spot, but interaction with the media is usually not the best idea. You are here as a board, and that's how you're presenting what you vote on and everything else. Interacting with them at, at the break on something like, hey, did you go up and see the lake at kids' fishing day, or how was the water level? Something like that innocuous is fine. But we just don't wanna put the media, no matter who they are, out on, call them to task for something, ask them what they've done in the past. After the last meeting, I apologize, I chased Trevor out the door, I chased him nicely, but I said, hey, I'm sorry they kinda asked you, put you on the spot. Somebody asked him, I think it was, maybe it was you, Doug, I, I don't know, you might've said, what did you write last December about this article or something? And Trevor just kinda looked, and he shrugged his shoulder. And I walked out, and I said, hey, I'm sorry we put you on the spot like that. And he said, that's all right, they didn't know any better. I'm just invisible when I'm there. And I liked that idea, he's just invisible when he's here. So I would just recommend, Mark and I, as your community relations consultants, would recommend that you keep that idea that they're invisible when they're here. That's my part.
That's what we referred to as the wise use of media. Is my budget shot already, did she use all my time? Did Tanya use all my time for this report? I think she did.
She did, but we're gonna let you borrow a little for next.
For next one. Okay, uh, we'll keep it brief here. The CR meeting, the CR committee reconvened after three, maybe four months of not meeting because of the season and so forth, and, and now with the new committee assignments and everything, we're raring to go. Plus, we've got a drought to deal with possibly, one way or another. I wanna add to Tanya's comments about the, um, the, you know, perpetual drought and, and how we respond to that. I like to think of our drought messaging as, as a seasonal thing. And while we're facing the challenges of a drought, like we may be in the next few weeks and months, we are hitting the, the, the conservation messages at that point. But come the fall, come, come the rains, that's when we can take a look at our successes. Then we switch out of that mode completely and get into the, hey, way to go, guys, good job. And people really seem to stay motivated better that way than if we have a continuous cutback, cutback, cutback sort of a mentality. I mean, we have to do what we have to do, but if we can take advantages of the lulls in that need, or when the water is more, more abundant, then that's, that's the way we wanna look at that. We talked about the workshop videos, that was the, the thing that we were gonna do to save money for PID. Instead of having a lot of workshops and, and invest a lot of time and, and energy and so forth and money in that, we were going to videotape and, and put on YouTube some, some tapes in regards to various conservation topics. And we finished our first video, so you can go on YouTube and you can look up PID's YouTube channel, and take a look at our three hours plus of video, down to 14 minutes of actual content. And we really focused, it was, it was, it was Ward Habril's presentation on composting and, and that sort of thing. We focused on the water-saving aspects. 'Cause composting is a pretty broad topic, really, I was surprised, I learned a lot. But Tanya brought it up, she does all the editing. I ta, I get to take the movies, and she gets to do all the editing. So she chopped it down really nice, and I think it's a very coherent, um, you know, in, in, what would you call it, introduction, I guess, to, to composting and saving water. 14 minutes is a little on the long side, but I would invite you all to take a look at it. And please, send me an email, give me a phone call, stop by the office, give us some feedback, 'cause we've got, I think, four more of these to do on different topics. And anything you might have to say to help us out, we'd appreciate that.
So how do we have access to it now?
It's, you go online, you go to YouTube, and you type in Paradise Irrigation District. Or you can even just type in Paradise Irrigation District YouTube, and that'll take you to probably, probably that video or one of the videos. And then you wanna go to the YouTube channel, so once you get into YouTube, which is a website, then you search for the PID or the Paradise Irrigation District channel, and you can see all the aquahawk videos that we've done and that sort of a thing, so.
We, we don't have a direct link?
We have a link of the Paradise Irrigation website.
That's what I, that's what I wanted to hear.
I didn't know, I didn't know if we had that up there yet.
It's the PID one.
Okay, good, great, so just go to the, the website and then take the link, very good.
Okay.
So, anyway, so we've taken, we, we've handled that. We worked on the, we talked about the News and Review publication. George and I first met with them last August, and that has then gone through various meetings and committee meetings, and so forth, and. And I think we're on our, we just turned in our second draft back to them? They gave us the second draft and we gave them feedback on that? I think that's where we're at right now. George called yesterday and said that they needed some more, well, actually, the committee discussed it. The committee kind of decided we wanted a little more variety in the photographs. And so George asked if we could go out yesterday and take a few photographs of the distribution maintenance crew out there doing some pipe laying, replacing pipes down South Pence Road. They're down at the end of Pence Road. And it was really a good education for Tanya and I.
Those guys work really hard.
Oh, I'll tell you, it was really something. In fact, in fact, I don't know if you noticed the pictures or not, we have a collage here and the bottom says, "Thanks for helping us tell PID's story." This is Tanya and myself thanking the crew, because we went out there, and there actually was kind of two places where they were working. So we went in, introduced ourselves, and just started taking pictures. And I took video and pictures. And we got some really good stuff, probably for the next five years in terms of community relations imaging, okay? And it was incredible watching it, saying, at one point, very specifically, there was a trench, and it was near the end of the day, and they were filling it, and there were three, sometimes four guys working the trench, and one guy with a, I guess it's a skip loader, maybe? It's a big old...
Safely, they did it very safely.
It was amazing, though. It was really something to watch. And it was just, the timing was perfect. And these guys were moving the whole time. And you watch this video, and it's an amazing concert of motion and productivity. It's really something to see. So I think we got some good materials there. Tanya sent the images that were requested down to Sacramento for the News and Review people to work with. And we have a lot of good materials for upcoming community relations outreach type of things. So that was, that was a great opportunity. So Tanya and I are taking this little display and two dozen doughnuts, three dozen doughnuts. These guys burn a ton of calories, okay? So they can handle three dozen doughnuts. I'm not going to partake. And just thank them tomorrow. And we're paying for the doughnuts. We just wanted to say thank you. I mean, Keith O'Brien was awesome. We called him up, and he's like, "Sure, no problem. Here's where they are. Here's who you asked for." And we met Leif, I don't know Leif's last name, but he was in charge of the crew at that point. And every, these guys were so cooperative. A lot of times they get kind of funny. You think, you know, "We don't want you taking pictures," or "Watch out for that trench," or, you know, kind of that sort of stuff. And we just felt really welcomed, and we got in and did our job and got to leave. And anyway, just another facet of the PID staff that we have not really had a chance to get to know. And just like the rest of the people we've met, they're doing their job exceptionally well. So that's the update on the News and Review publication.
Will you be delivering doughnuts on-site?
We'll be delivering doughnuts tomorrow morning.
Oh, man.
On-site, they've got, well, if you can come in tomorrow.
Yeah, get me a maple bar for the inconvenience.
We're actually going to meet with them tomorrow morning when they have their safety meeting. That John's going to be doing for them tomorrow. So we're going to bring the doughnuts to their safety meeting and just say thank you to them. So that's the game plan there. Couple of things we talked about at the meeting. We were talking about some, possibly some forums for specialty customers, some of the irrigation customers and the residential irrigation customers, just sort of brainstorming on how we're going to communicate with them if there's any issues of needing to change rates and so forth. So we kind of did some preliminary work on that. The restaurant and motel conservation outreach. Dustin, you mentioned this already about the meeting today and the edict that had been handed down. I just grabbed this little headline, it says, "California Restaurants and Bars Now Prohibited From Serving Water Without a Request." And it starts this way, it says, "In case you weren't aware, the water situation in California is getting pretty damn serious." I think that's a pun. "As in, we might run out of water within a year serious." And they go on to announce the fact that the state now wants anybody in a restaurant to have to ask for their water, not to be served a glass of water unless they request it. And likewise, similar restrictions on the laundering of linens and so forth in hotels and motels. You guys already took care of this last year. You know, you made your recommendations, your requests of the community, and we have been following up with, we've been following up with distributing these things. Right now, I've got two or three boxes in the back of the truck, I still have to get out there. But I think we've gotten three or four hundred of these out to the various restaurants and one of the hotels already so far. So, and everybody, as soon as you say, "Well, PID wants you to have this," I start out with pointing out the regulations that you gentlemen passed. And then I move on to, "PID wants you to have these resources here, these are available." And they're like, "Whoa, how much is it?" I say, "Well, PID's supplying these." And they're, "Wow, yeah, give me..." You know, and we give them all they need and then about fifty percent more to cover the loss, because after a while, even though this is heavily coated paper, it's going to wear out. And, you know, it's really a great design. Some people are going to steal it and take it home and look at it, you know? So, anyway, so that's the restaurant and motel conservation outreach, and that's ongoing. We should be able to wrap that up in the next week or two, I think. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of comments about this.
Well, let me...
Conservation. About conservation. This isn't a director's thing. I just wanted to say that I'm noticing that at the restaurants, people are saying, "Please give me a small glass of water." So I think this is going through. And also, one of my clients says, I couldn't believe it, but whenever he warms up water, he puts it in a bucket while he's waiting for hot water, and he does his laundry with that water. And so, and then myself, I quit watering outside two years ago, and now I found out which plants are drought-resistant.
In regard to the balance of the Community Relations Committee meeting, I just wanted to emphasize one thing that was briefly brought up, but that is that the Community Relations Committee is suggesting an outreach to the ag users, the residential irrigation customers and the irrigation customers to come in and have a meeting with the rate committee as an information gathering thing, hear what their opinions are about their situation and the drought and so on and so forth. And that's something that is, will be handled by another committee, but we kind of approve passing that message along to the other committee. Since we know those committee members, it was pretty easy.
What? Yeah, it's me? It's us two, right?
And there was one topic of conversation about a public member of the committee, Ward Habril. And I think that I'm just not going to report on that now. I'll take care of that and director comments at the end of the meeting. But anyhow, that was the end of our meeting. General manager's report. Oh, I saw that maybe there was a public comment in regard to this last thing, so we'll take that at this time.
Two things. First off, she had a very good idea, which I concur with. I think we ought to be patting people on the back. They have saved, and to my knowledge, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're at a higher level of water and storage right now than we was at this time last year. So perhaps, "Add a boy, add a girl" would be a good thing to give to the public. And second thing is about YouTube. If you go to anybody's YouTube site and you subscribe to their channel, you will get notifications every time they publish. So you don't have to go look to see if they did something new. So I just thought I'd tell you that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the general manager's report. General Manager Barber, please.
Thank you. You have my written report. I'll just add a few things. This is a chart, you'll probably start seeing it in the board packets in the future, it's handed out. You can look at one, Lauren. At the water conservation committee, we've always struggled with trying to tell the public how much water there is that we have, and do they understand acre feet? And if you put it in billions of gallons, they'll think we have more water than we ever need in percentage. Director Kellogg was talking about how much water we have left, kind of a concept. So this is what I came up with. This shows our current water storage at the first of the month and how many months of water we have left if we don't get any more rain.
Based upon our typical uses per...
Last three years averaged of usage.
Okay.
And it's monthly uses, so it will, that year's use keeps, it's not a single number necessarily, it kind of keeps moving. So hopefully, put some thought into that, if that helps you understand our water picture better. In light of the articles about the state running out of water in the year, I also thought it was helpful, because people may want to know, "Well, is PID going to run out of water in a year?" No, nineteen months.
We'll go a year and a half.
Why did May go up if we're not going to have any rain?
May's not on it yet.
May, 2014. Oh, fourteen.
That's March.
Okay, I thought that was, I thought this was May of this year.
And you can see the influence of storm events. So if you go back a year, when we were talking drought last year, we were fifteen and a half months away. And we got a rainstorm in April.
Oh, okay.
So...
So the only one we look at is the last one, nineteen months.
The last one, the rest is kind of reference.
Oh, okay. I thought you were forecasting...
No, no forecasting on this one. I did one last year that was forecasted, and it just gets a little more dicey with a forecast.
I think that your July 2014 bar is a little unruly. It stepped off its mark.
It sure did.
Yeah. Make them go back to the left a little.
It was too hot at one of the...
At least it went to the right.
It's all concerned. So we'll have a drought meeting. You got the notice from George Ann on the first special board meeting.
I thought that was April Fool's joke.
It was not a joke. You will, the only purpose of that meeting is to update our drought regulations as a district. Our trigger as a district's April 1st, and the sooner we can get that word out to our public, what we're going to do, the better. I'm working with Dustin to figure out the state's influence on this. Last year, we passed a resolution adopting our conservation measures. I've read in a couple of places that we may have to take it a little deeper and actually update our water shortage contingency plan, which is included in our urban water management plan. So between now and the first, we'll work all that out, and we'll bring it to you, and that'll be the only item on the agenda. I've been dealing with union personnel business since last month. I finally got a response from the union today on the customer service positions, but we've still got work to do with them. They need a little more education on what our proposal was. And we did get a grievance from, on the Lake Patrol issue that went through Level 1 and I'm Level 2, so that's in process right now. I'll characterize it this way. Emily Lamoe's been doing this a long time, and she told me this is the first time she's ever had a district defending seniority. So, you never know with those people. We had a request, and I'm inclined to support it. You remember, we bought some pickup trucks to eliminate the left-handed drive Jeeps, and we were going to sell those. There's been a request up at the lake to utilize one of those Jeeps, because it's small, at the lake for patrolling the lake and just in and around the lake. So it lessens my concerns about driving the left-hand drive on the road. It has a lot of functionality for up there, and it'll show a good presence with the public. So at this point, I'm leaning towards that being my determined best use of the vehicle. If any director thinks we should discuss that further at the board level, let me know, and we'll put it on the agenda before we make a final decision. You can email me, whatever, tell me now, whatever your pleasure is.
Should we put it to the lake committee?
Pardon?
Can we put it to the lake committee?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay.
And bring it back to the board.
How do they now motorate themselves around? You know, what is it replacing? Is it replacing a pickup truck?
It's not going to replace a pickup truck. They have pickup trucks that they use for moving around and coming down to town. They have, generally, when they're patrolling, they're patrolling by boat or by foot. I mean, they can drive the truck around, but when it's crowded with people, it's a pretty big truck to kind of maneuver around the lake itself. So their intent is smaller four-wheel drive, more maneuverable, that they can actually patrol by vehicle when people are actively there. So it's going to the board, so we'll talk about it next month.
Okay. Is that a four-wheel drive?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
Last thing on my charts, there's our updated gallons per person per day. Here's where we're sitting. We're looking all right. And I'll just leave it at that. Any questions?
I wanted to comment on, I have a program on my cell phone, and it says it's 90% chance it's going to rain Monday and a little bit Tuesday. So if it does 90%, that would be probably for us an inch of rain. And the last storm gave us almost a half inch in the higher elevation in our watershed. So then that's only four days from now. We'll have a better idea. Hopefully, the water level will come up a little bit from it. And I like the idea of making the comments from the district positive. I have people that ask me about what our situation is, and they read the paper, and they're afraid of what's happening. They're basically very afraid. Are we going to have enough water? Because they read all these news clippings coming out. And we have this unique watershed that seems to work. These storms come in, and last year, it was very particular about it. They'd come right up the watershed and rain, and that's how we basically got out of, plus, of course, the customer's not using the water. And we could do the same. We're in a much better shape on the water. And if we get a good, strong rain next week, and maybe in a couple of weeks after that, we move right on. Part of my business is grazing cattle, and doesn't seem to be of much importance, except that the grass has been a very good grass year. The rains have come just in time to, and it looks like this next one's going to do the same thing. If it didn't rain next week, we'd probably have to pull cattle off the range. The feed would stop and be only four or six inches high in this. But if the rain comes, like they're predicting, we will have at least another week or two weeks of good feed. So that's somehow, I get the feeling for this weather business, is I've spent most of my time outside working with agriculture. And most of the time, aggies look at the TV weather stations and go, "What's this guy talking about? He doesn't know what he's talking about, just because of his explanations. Doesn't see the agricultural use." But I think the positive of this is thanking the citizens for saving the water, our customers, and stressing that we're in a much better shape than we were last year, and don't pay attention to Southern California.
Yeah, I think every time I've been asked, and I didn't read the article today, Trevor interviewed me yesterday, I've said, "We're in a great situation compared to the rest of the state, and we're doing quite well. Try to let people know it's because of their efforts, and we're in such a good position." And we'll cover it more on the first, but we picked the first for a reason, because of our historical rainfall records and...
Oh, I think it's very good you're going to have the first, because they've come out with, Dustin mentioned earlier, that the state has come out with those regulations, and we've got to respond to it. I think you're doing fine.
I think that we should take some credit for it, too, with these automated meters. I think that's really saved us. And the fact that our public is conserving and the automated meters has really helped. We did two, the public did a great job, and then I think that the board did a good job getting the meters in to help the people.
That's actually, that's an interesting component of these regulations that changed from last year to this year. There's a mandate on the water agency to promptly provide a notice if they realize there's a leak on the customer's side of the meter.
How many people can do that?
Yeah, we've been doing that since...
We ought to get some extra funding, since we already did it, huh?
Well, I do think these are mandates. I use that word for a reason. I think somebody ought to file a test claim and force the state to pay for it.
Not this time, Trevor.
Yeah, Trevor, don't do that.
Trevor, I'm sorry. Dustin.
Okay.
I want to hear more about who, do what?
Help to cut this later.
Well, we'll get to the legal report coming up next. I don't know if he will or not, but.
I hope so.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, number nine.
All right. So I've got four topics that I've been asked to speak to. The first two litigation-related indirectly. I don't recall if I've mentioned this or not, but we had our test claim trial in December. A couple of days after that, I got a call from California Special Districts Association. Asked me to prepare a, an article for their magazine. So I did that and we ended up being the feature article. So if you happen to get that magazine, you'll see in Paradise Irrigation District amongst other districts that are represented in that test claim are mentioned in the article. So I wanted to make sure you're aware of that. And I thought, I've already received a couple of calls on it. So it's a good, good article. Hopefully generates some interest in this very interesting test claim that the districts have participated in. Second matter, the JM Pipe case, not a whole lot going on. Remember, there's the, the settlement pool of funds with Formosa. We're still working with the district's special counsel, special legal counsel on how to fairly divide that up amongst all the claimants. So kind of the only action in the case has been kind of this back and forth and, and district staff has been really good. I think Keith, is, is Keith doing primarily the heavy lift on that?
He did the early heavy lift, the finding and everything, and then I, I've been carrying it after that.
Fair amount of work, background work, going through project files and they wanted a lot of information, so. And I'll continue to give periodic updates and we'll have a closed session if necessary for any kind of strategic discussion. The emergency regs, not much more to add. I, I think this is a little hysteria, hysteria from the state. It's one size fits all. Believe it or not, there are reservoirs in California that are spilling right now. On the, on the northern coast, you've got reservoirs full and spilling and they're being asked to basically cut their revenue by forcing conservation when it's unnecessary. It's not like that water can be routed to Southern California, to other areas where it's needed. It's just going out into the ocean. So it, it is kind of offensive that it's this one size fits all, heavy-handed regulation, but it is what we have to deal with. And there were, as I understand it, some amendments from the board that haven't made print yet. So hopefully by April one, we'll have the final draft and remember the process is the water board approves it and they approved it with some amendments that we haven't seen. Then it goes to the Office of Administrative Law. There's about a ten-day period there. So I, I'm hoping by April one, we'll see some final regulations that I can then give you some input on. Staff can as well. They're much more heavy-handed mandates. So I think the odd even days probably aren't going to, well, they're not going to work. We're going to have to have at least one day where there's no watering. And as I said earlier, the state's desire is that you have only two days where watering is allowed. And I'll work with George and staff and, and figure out where PID fits safely within these mandates. My sense of it is we're really blessed from a supply perspective compared to others and we probably don't necessarily need to be quite as aggressive with, with our conservation requirements as, as others. So, but we'll work through that and, and provide recommendations. Director Hunt gave me a, a news article here. And I read it and it's actually a case that I've been indirectly hearing rumors and discussions on. Haven't read any of the trial court documents. It's currently in the appellate court. But the topic is tiered water rates under Proposition 218. And to give you a little background on why this is an issue. Proposition 218, it's a constitutional amendment from nineteen ninety-six. It says, public agency, you shall charge water rates that are no more than your cost of service, right? If you exceed your cost of service, that's a tax, that's a different procedure, and it would be unlawful under Proposition 218. So you have to do a very detailed cost of service study. And when you have aggressively tiered conservation rates where, you know, you reach a certain consumption level and the rate doubles or triples or whatever, there's always been this tension, how can you justify that as a cost of service? Is that increment increase reflective of cost of service or is that a penalty? So this case kind of gets at that issue. It's an interesting tension between what, what a constitutional provision says and what a statute requires. Because there actually are some statutes that the legislature enacted after Proposition 218 trying to say, basically trying to interpret the constitution and say, conservation tiered rates are okay. My view on it is we're going to be conservative. We're going to justify why tiered rates are indicative of cost of service. And I think there's a way to do that. You know, you, you say, we just have a certain amount of supply currently. And if we have to go out and acquire additional supply because we've got a number of customers that are heavy users, then that additional supply, we estimate is going to cost X amount of dollars. And that X amount of dollars is then spit into a, a program, hopefully Kevin can do this, that justifies that, you know, tiered top, tier one rate, so to speak. So that's one way to do it. And I don't, I suspect that this is an Orange County water agency. I suspect they just kind of somewhat arbitrarily said, if you exceed this level, we're going to double or triple or quadruple your water rate. And it wasn't kind of tied to some acquisition or, or drought supply figure.
Punishment.
Right. Another theory that I have that, you know, again, I didn't read the, the brief, so I don't know if this was raised or not. But in my mind, when you reach a certain excessive water use, that becomes wasted unreasonable use. You know, you're watering your lawn every day when it only needs it every third day, for example. And so if you can't get at them through your tiered water rate, you can get on, get at them through your rules and regulations that empower the district to prevent wasted unreasonable use of water. So I, I think there's a couple of ways. I, I wouldn't, Ken, I wouldn't read this article as saying, uh-oh, we can't have a conservation tiered rate. I still think we can. We just need to be smart about it, justify it.
Documentation.
So that's all I have unless there's questions.
Do you think that tier, that lawsuit has any chance?
The, as I understand it, the taxpayer advocates, the, the folks that were against the tiered rate won in the trial court. And it's currently in the fourth district, one of the appellate courts in Southern California. And I'm not sure s- a schedule for when an opinion is expected, but I can, I can check on that.
So they did win the first part of their case?
Yeah, and the way California lies, a, a trial court decision is not precedential. So the fact that it went against that water agency doesn't affect PID from a legal precedent perspective. Once there's an appellate court decision, those are precedential and it, it may impact us for good or bad.
Do you think it might go to the state Supreme Court then?
Possibly, yeah. Because as I said, it's got that tension between what the constitution says in Proposition 218 and what the legislature enacted, kind of interpreting the constitution. And those types of issues where there's a constitutional tension typically get Supreme Court review.
So we might have next year to worry about it, but do you figure the time it goes through the court?
Five years.
Yeah, Supreme Court takes a while.
Yeah, so nothing we have to worry about right now.
At the Cal Lafcom convention last year, they mentioned that one of the water districts was paying sixty thousand dollars to do what Kevin did for us.
A cost of service study?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, they're expensive.
Not now, Kevin.
See, we can give our staff an attaboy too.
Okay. Any other questions for legal? We have a public comment in regard to our legal report.
Thank you, directors. I, I, when I read that, I thought that also meant the people that get lower rates couldn't get lower rates either. I don't know where that stands, but I'm just throwing that out there. And the other thing is if we're going to, if we're going to be going around town and telling people they're watering their lawn three times a week when we think they only need two, we better be getting somebody with a license that, that, that the state recognizes as far as plants go. Because if you start telling people that you don't think they ought to water their lawn three times and it turns out their lawn dies when you tell them to turn back to two, you might be, you might be reseeding some lawns. So you might want to think about that.
That's all right.
Is that a conflict?
Thank you, Lauren. We're going to move into item number ten, staff and billing reports. They were in the, the agenda packet. Are there any, any questions of the staff and billing reports, directors?
I was noticing that there is a drought fatigue, you know, that people will say conserve water for just so long and then they have a tendency to start using it. And that showed up in one of these graphs that I saw. That, that people do get tired if you, if you keep hitting them over the head about conserving, they do get tired of it. And so I think, I think a good idea of giving them an attaboy is, is good.
We're unanimous on that then.
Right.
Any, any comments about the staffer billing reports down this way or?
Well, we're talking about the, our water reports too that are in.
Yes.
Then I have a comment on page sixty-nine.
What year? What page?
No surprise, you always have a comment on that page.
Yeah, but it's a different number this time. I'm sure it's not the same number it was last month.
But the red line's still flat?
Not really.
Red one down.
What I have is a suggestion. These things are based on years and they're really broad. Can we just take the chart and make it for the last, for a year by months like we've done with other charts? Because this one is not, it's so broad that, you know, I complain about the, you know, percentage goes up. Larry tells me it's not any importance. I would like to see it on a monthly basis where it's not a yearly thing. This is thing, it goes back to nineteen ninety-seven and I'm going, well, this is two thousand and fifteen. Do we really need to look at nineteen ninety-seven?
Well, I, since we're making recommendations, I'll jump on that and say, get rid of the percentage blue sign and just show us the raw water detail.
Can I comment?
Okay. Staff?
Cover both issues. One of the reasons we show so far back is to remind everybody, our district customers, our board members, our staff, where we used to be. We used to lose nearly a third of our water. We've made a lot of progress. And so if you chop all that off, you lose that historical perspective.
We'll start at two thousand and seven then. How's that? And that shows you your high water use loss.
That's only twenty percent. I remember times when it was up over thirty percent.
Yeah.
I've been, I've been here since nineteen eighty, seventy-six.
Yeah, I can remember running for town council and complaining about no water pressure on Neil and no water pressure at a park uptown, old part of Paradise and, and so forth. That's all pretty much in the past now, but the.
The second, your second comment about monthly is monthly's not going to provide a graph that is easily understood or easily credible, I'll even say it. So if you, if you remember, this graph looks twelve months back and averages the loss over the last twelve months. That's the twelve-month cumulative time interval. And the reason it does that is when you start crunching that time down, you get variables in reading dates and time in the district. When you're in the month, when you're in winter months, it takes three days for water to leave the treatment plant and go out of your meter down there. So then you're going to get a graph that's going to look, go jump all over the place and it's not going to tell anybody the story at all.
Well, then I'll just keep bringing up the point that we're losing water in our pipes.
Be sure to mention that we're.
I will keep bringing up the point that our water loss is continuing to go down because look at the unaccounted water, the red line.
The red line actually went up the middle of last year. It doesn't show very much, but it did go up.
I'm going to say that a lot of water districts are happy if it's ten percent.
Well, any rate, I made my point.
Okay, so you're still, you're going to get comments all the time.
Well, that's all right. At least I haven't gone over Dustin's bill tonight, eight grand, and, and complained about that. See, see how it goes from a graph to complaining about the attorney's cost?
Thank you.
I can deflect that for you, Dustin.
Yeah, it was great.
Great, go ahead. Okay, any other comments on the staff and billing reports?
No.
There, there being none, we're going to move to the treasurer's report, treasurer's memo. Kevin, regale us.
Oh wait, aren't we going to accept the reports? I move that we accept the staff and billing rep.
I think that's a good idea.
Reports.
I'll second it. Any further comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Uh, no.
Any opposed?
Three to one.
Was that a no, Bill?
Hmm?
Was that a no?
Yes, it was a no.
Yes, it was a no. Okay, the motion passes.
Three to one.
Three to one with the absence of a director. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to.
The board reads it.
Talk to, we, I'm skipping that and we're going to talk to the treasurer.
You have my written memo. There's kind of a, not really a report this week just because the timeframe of the board meeting is really hard to get. Things get closed up before I have to get the information over to George Anna so that she can publish it for the board meeting. Currently, our cash position is about three point eight million dollars. We've been about holding steady. We've bounced between three point eight and three point six for the last, for the last, what are we in, nine months now? Eight months. So our ca- our cash position's pretty, pretty flat. We have basically made all of our debt service for the year. We only have a little bit of maybe a twenty thousand dollar interest payment that we'll pay in May, I think, and that will be it for the debt service. The consumption revenue is lagging behind the budget, what we estimated. So that we are definitely showing, showing effects of, of conservation based on what we normally bring in as income. It did flatten out this month, but this is one of our lowest months, so we do have, we expect low usage for this month and we got low usage for this month. So that actually makes sense. One thing that you're going to see next board meeting, and I'll kind of prep you for it, is you're going to see resolutions for borrowing money from the state revolving fund. You're going to see pledges of revenue. You're going to see reimbursement costs. You're going to see things that are basically helping us go forward with this borrowing for the B reservoir project. Doesn't mean that we are approving anything. We're not approving to spend anything. We're not, we're just approving the process to go forward. If the district decides to not do the project, we're, we're not obligated to, to borrow the funds. So I just want to kind of clarify that before you see it in your next board packet, before you start kind of freaking out that we're, we're obligating ourselves to something that we haven't even approved to go forward with. This is just to make the steps to go forward with the borrowing process, so.
Well, that's on the B reservoir.
That's on the B reservoir.
Has nothing to do with the water treatment process?
Not yet, no. Because the water treatment process, we will be going forward with that. You will see resolutions for that. That one, we pretty much have kind of approved to go forward with, so we do want to get that one kind of started. Both projects will require rate increases to pledge those revenues. So that will be part of a rate increase.
Yeah.
If the board decides to go forward with the B reservoir, that will be part of a rate increase to pledge those revenues for that borrowing.
So there would be, there would be a rate increase for the water treatment, which we're committed to one point two mil for the planning process. And then we have an estimate of ten mil to build it.
So it'll be a rate increase for that.
Plus, a rate increase if we go, if we want to go with the B project.
That's correct.
And a rate increase for increased operational costs.
Correct.
What?
For increased operational costs.
Yes, yeah, because we can go back to page fifteen, which we won't discuss any further tonight.
That's correct.
Page fifteen says it all.
That's correct. So, so just, just to kind of let you know that we're not obligated to borrow, we're not obligated to build. We're just trying to move the process forward and these are the requirements that the state is asking for us to do that, so. And by pledging these revenues, you have to meet. And by pledging these revenues, you have to meet certain requirements, you're going to have to meet certain debt ratio requirements to make sure that you can pledge these revenues, and that will all be taken into consideration when we do a rate increase, to make sure that we're doing enough to meet the ratios that they're requiring from us. And I think that's about it for me.
Well, you know, I'm sure we'll be talking about this, the rate increase, even though these two guys here are on the rate, they will be coming to all of us on here. And operational issues, number three, go down to A1, and every, you have it in here every time this way. Kevin, it's on there. From an operational standpoint, service fee revenue is right on budget, which tells me that people are paying their water bills.
Well, they don't, we get it, no matter what.
Yeah, I realize that. But it seems like to me the only way we can have a real cash flow smooth is some service fees.
And we'll, we'll be looking at that. We're, I've done quite a bit of rate analysis currently. George is doing a lot of rate analysis also. We're going to be combining our brains together and coming up with a solid rate that I think that we can take to the rate committee for their, their input, and maybe the public's input. We've discussed a lot about conservation rates and about how those are implemented, and so, so I think that we can find something that's going to give us the security that we need, but also that's something that is conservation oriented.
I, I love to use water, I try to use it properly, but as far as the, you know, the consumption fee is concerned, my place is a business, and in fact, we're going away from that business as a matter of fact. And I think my normal water bill, including the service fee annually, was like $1,500 or something like this, which I had no problem with, because I irrigated everything I wanted, but I didn't really waste water, I just used water. I've been doing it on that piece of property since 1950.
Oh, don't go back that far, your point?
No, no. And this year, it's down to around $500, because I really conserve water up here. And so that's what we got hit with.
Good job.
You see?
Yeah.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Did I miss it, but did we get a report on the pilot thing?
Pilot plant?
Yeah.
The pilot plant is currently being...
Yeah, I didn't really cover that.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
It's going well, it's, it's really worth the effort and the expense, I can tell you that. They are working through different chemicals, different levels of chemical dosing, different types of chemicals.
I'd recommend, that was up there today.
Fine-tuning the process, what works, what doesn't work. They're learning a lot based on our stuff. And we did have a meeting today with the former State Health Department, now the Regional Water Quality Control Board, Drinking Water Division. We had Dick Heinrichs, who's Chief Engineer of the entire North State, we had a redding guy there, and a couple others. So we got them to really understand the process, what we're proposing. It was really worthwhile meeting. We understand better how they're going to apply regulations to it, so it was a good, good day.
And how long will that last?
Couple more weeks.
Okay. Back, back to the treasurer, can we?
I was going to make a motion to approve of the treasurer's.
There you go, we're back to it.
I'll second that. He's moving it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? You, you made a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
To accept the... But I seconded it.
Yes, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None, it passes 4-0. We are now moving into director comments. Bill, would you like to lead us off, and we'll just move down this way?
I continue to work on the constructed wet ones, and I'm hoping to have it ready for the agenda next month. And George, I was surprised you didn't say anything about your tour with Sarah. She was very pleased, and thought you guys were a great bunch of people, and very complimentary.
It just happened right after the last meeting, so I forgot.
Okay, yes, I was going to give a report, I talked to George about getting hold of Jim and going up to pilot unit we're talking about, that's on page 61, and the blue machine that was in the paper and all of that. And I was able to go and just see him, I got a little break in some of the stuff I'm doing this week. So I went up, and lo and behold, if AECOM was there, Joel, the engineer that we've all met here, and then I met Alex Modifi, he's the Director of Water Purification and Quality, and it was really informative, as you're aware, I love machinery. And it was quite, they're testing out the plate device that we're going to have, and they're coming up with sizes and the amounts, and it was extremely informative, but I couldn't have picked a better day, because I got there about the same time those two engineers got there, and I spent 45 minutes with them and out there looking at the plant. Like you said, we're going to have it about another two weeks, and it's really a sound way of figuring out the size and the number of plates and the volumes and all of this. And then this Alex is also an expert in figuring out, along with his staff, the size of, oh, for Christ's sake, device.
Equalization?
No, no.
Centrifuge?
The centrifuge, whether we have to have a bigger one or a smaller one, you know, that's a whole nother ballgame.
Yeah, we're even testing a screw press, which may be a less energy intensive.
Well, we're not able, to make that screw press really work, they got to have 500 gallons a minute, we're putting 50 gallons a minute through, and so the screw press isn't going to show as much.
But they bench tested with the screw press.
With that $90,000 that we're spending for this device is money well-spent, because it really can tell us, the engineering, what they need to do, and the size of all this kind of stuff, so that was, that was a wise move, and we're going to be going with a centrifuge and all of that other stuff, which, yes, we are.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
We pat ourselves on the back.
Yes.
Larry?
Okay, my comment is, I, first, I want to thank the board for approval of the nomination letter to further my endeavors with Butlafco.
I haven't signed it yet.
Well, we've approved it. Anyway, but anyway, and I would request that Georgiana send an email to Lafco telling them that, and ask them to send me the emails for all of the other special districts, so that I can send them a letter asking for their support. Could you do that?
So...
Send it, one to Lafco.
Instead of sending a letter, send them an email stating that the board approved it?
Yes.
And then ask her to send me the emails of all the special districts, so I can send them a letter asking for their support.
The enterprise districts, or do...
Yeah, enterprise district.
Yeah, okay.
Because Dustin said that he's heard that I didn't want to continue, and...
Yeah, I heard that...
That's not true.
The meetings are going together, somebody thought you weren't interested in running again.
Yeah, no, I am, and see, if I lose that, then I lose my Calafco thing, too. And that I really enjoy. I think I'm representing the district very good there.
Thank you, Larry. My turn. My comment is in regard to the Town of Paradise meeting that Ward Habriel attended earlier this month. And it came to my attention that he said some things which seemed to be breaking the PID rules and regulations for public members. And I had occasion to pull this up and take a look at the filming of that, and saw myself what it was that, that he said, and how it came across, and how he said it. Basically, our rule here, and I don't know what page this is, but paragraph C7, and I'll, I'll read it to you. Public members shall not communicate with any media about PID committee business. Public members shall not identify themselves as a PID committee member when sharing their own personal perspective on any issue and through any medium, goes on. And what Ward did at the town hall meeting is, he gets up to speak as a public member, and he says, "PID has been, you know, I'm on the Water Conservation Committee, they've been discussing whether or not to go to the same program as last year, a 20% reduction," and he continues on and on and on and on. We have talked to Ward about this before, we've been the collective we. And, you know, in my opinion, the rule we have over here is basically the Ward Habriel clause that was put in there because of his actions previous, this is the second time it's come up, and I think that there has to be something done about that. I'll just read one other comment down here, further into his text. The gist of his comments there were that Ward wants to shame all of the leadership of the town, town government, town council, PID, the school board, the PTA, the Boy Scouts of America, whoever else may be there, he wants to shame them into being the leaders and talking the talk and walking the walk and showing everybody that they should conserve water. And he makes this comment. He was, he was pleading with the town council and congratulating them, "You five guys are doing a great job," or something like that. He says, "Five of you doing that would be great." No, he didn't say they were, he just said, "If all five of you did that, that would be great." Actually, only two directors at PID have done that. They're working on something there. Okay, well, unless Ward Habriel made a public relay, a public request record of records, and I checked into it, and I asked, and he hasn't, he has no way of, you know, which, which three directors is he pointing his finger at that are not doing these conservation things? And if he's just willy-nilly out there bashing the board, it's my opinion that we do not need a member of the public on our committee within our organization causing this type of turmoil and stress and maybe misinformation. So, it's just my comment once again, but I would like to, let me see what my notes wrote down there. I would like to ask staff, or perhaps even the, what, what is that committee? It's the Conservation Committee that he's, yeah, the Conservation Committee. But somebody needs to step up and talk to Ward and say, "Ward, this is twice now, we don't appreciate it, we have rules against it, which you have clearly transgressed, and if it's brought up again, in fact, if it happens again, I can, I can tell you what I'm going to do, I'm going to make it an agenda item on the next board meeting for us to discuss removing him from the, from the committee." The committee may want to handle it in a particular manner, and that's okay, but it just needs to be handled. That's, that's my comment. So, that being said...
Ward wants a session.
I don't think we have public comments about director comments.
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
So, it's time to adjourn the meeting, folks. Thank you very much for your participation.
Are you going to turn it back to the committee?
Oh, I don't, I don't really turn it, I just say, you know, staff or committee, somebody can step up.
I communicate with Ward quite frequently, and I've said at his workshops on conservation that he has the best intention.
Well, actually, we, we have to stop because we don't...
My dad said, "The road to hell's paved with good intentions, all right?" We are very happy to talk to everybody.
We're adjourned.